Everybody, I'd like to have somebody in order. First of all, I would like to welcome Vanessa Witt from the King School of Vocal to sing "Oh, Canada." Please stand.
True patriot love in all our sons' command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Et à valeur de foie troupei. Ro tègero no foryè se no dwa. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vanessa. That was lovely. So it's been moved by Councillor Frank Etherington that the minutes of the regular meeting held... Can't move it, he's not here. All right, we'll have... Okay, so it's been moved by Councillor Kelly Seelach... Sorry, Galloway-Seelock, that the minutes of the regular meeting held September 16th, 2013, and special meetings held September 17th and 20... 30th of 2013 as mailed to the mayor and councillor be accepted. All in favor? And that's so moved. Thank you. Yes, Councillor Gazola. Just one second, please. Go ahead. Oh, sorry. There you go.
I had a question with regard to the minutes. Last week, there was a caucus meeting which I questioned the necessity to go into caucus on. There was a vote taken, and I lost the vote. But in the minutes that I've seen, there's been no mention whatsoever that it was... the question was raised, and that a vote was taken, and how the vote went. So where does that end up for the record?
Okay, can the clerk please answer?
It is not procedurally put into the minutes.
Does that answer your question, Councillor Gazola?
No, because there were a lot of other things put into the minutes. In an instant like that, when it's a challenge to the discussion and the vote is taken...
Okay, clerk, can we have a clarification on that, please?
We can add those into the minutes if Councillor Gazola would like.
Yes, I would.
Okay, thank you very much. So done. All right, on to the disclosure of pecuniary interest. I'd like to request that members of council declare any pecuniary interest regarding matters listed on the agenda. Is there any? None tonight? Okay, thank you very much. Just want to move one item up, and that is in our bylaws, 11D. The bylaw to close part of the public highway known as portion of alley, Plan 362 being Part 20, Plan 58R-161710, City of Kitchener. We have somebody in attendance who would like to hear if that bylaw has moved. I'd like to move that for all three bylaws. I need a mover for that. Moved by Councillor Davy and seconded by Councillor Galloway-Seelock. All in favor? All right, moved unanimous. Thank you very much. So the gentleman that is here, that has been moved, and that will proceed. All right, we'll go to... We have a number of delegations tonight. I'm going to ask for council's indulgence in moving an item and a delegation on an item that although it is not on the agenda, it has received a number of... a lot of public attention in the last week, and that is on gas rates. And I'd like to move that Mr. Harold Drewitz is allowed to speak this evening. And we need a... I need a mover for that. I'm asking for a mover. Okay, sorry. Councillor Vaganovich?
I think councillor... I guess Chair Fernandez, we customarily accept delegations, so I don't think we need any movers.
My understanding from the clerk was that I needed to have a vote of council to move a delegation to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. And Councillor Yonetsky? So moved. So we'll take a vote on that, please. All in favor? Sorry, seconded was Councillor Davy. Thank you. All in favor? And that's unanimous. All right, please come forward, Mr. Drewitz, and make your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor, and thank you councillors. As usual, I have a package for the councillors. And I have a package for the CAOs.
Just wanted to remind you, Mr. Drewitz, that you, under council rules of procedure, previously registered delegates, and you were registered earlier today only by phone, but you still only have five minutes.
Thank you very much. This is the fourth time I am speaking to council's natural gas purchase policy. Right from the outset, Bob Donald and I were upfront and transparent with you, stating we were going to watch the difference in prices between Union Gas versus Kitchener Utilities, and we will stay on top of this issue. The only reason I and our tax group is here is because your lack of concrete and firm direction to staff on this issue. The citizens of Kitchener and especially the customers of Kitchener Utilities expect more from this council on this issue. Since I do not have much time, I will present in point form. May 27th, 2013, I kindly asked council to review the natural gas purchase policy which was passed on October 16th, 2006. This policy is too vague and really does lack a good sense of direction. A more firm, detailed policy is necessary. At that same meeting, as per the minutes, councillors inquired, questioned, but no firm action taken. We were disappointed. June 10th, 2013. As you know, I pointed out some more information on Jim Greenbauer's graph presented at the May 27th meeting. I used staff's graph and pointed out how City of Kitchener, together with Kitchener Utilities Management, has erred. Bob and I thought some of you councillors were on the correct track. Again, see the minutes of June 10th meeting? Some councillors asked excellent questions, made proposals, and good requests. However, again, no motion nor concrete action. September 30th, a week ago. Due to the non-action of council at the above two mentioned meetings, all of a sudden a report from staff appears on this meeting's agenda: gas supply options. Although this issue was discussed at the May and June meetings, it was never questioned, requested, nor proposed from council to staff to look into this. Last week, one councillor even mentioned this was a report and an issue that basically all councillors agreed with back in the spring, so why the waste of time putting this together? Staff totally ignored Bob's and my presentations and councillors' questions, proposals, and requests at the May and June meetings. Why did staff not have a report based on Councillor Gazola's questions, Councillor Zing's survey proposal, and Councillor Dan Graham's... or Glenn Graham's request? Instead, we get this non-requested report, and during questioning, a PIHD dissertation from the Director of Utilities of all the steps taken before a decision is made to purchase a futures contract for natural gas. Well, guess what? In spite of all those good and necessary steps, along with the expert consultants, City of Kitchener and Kitchener Utilities Management got it wrong. By the way, is KU still using those expert consultants? Let's just be open, honest, and transparent about this. Bob and I could not believe what was taking place around this horseshoe last week. Again, most disappointing, council's lack of firm and concrete action last week. Moving forward, we, and not just our group, but I can tell now, the citizens of Kitchener, expect the following: an immediate review of the October 17th, 2006 policy, firm up by no later than approximately November 18th, 2013, or at least a memorandum of understanding; a scientific survey carried out by a reputable national company completed no later than December 16th, 2013; an inquiry completed by an auditing firm to give the users of Kitchener Utilities some idea as to how much more we paid for natural gas due to the vague October 6... 2006 policy. I'd like to see this directed by Councillor Gazola. I will be glad to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. You did very well within the five minutes. Councillor Gazola, you have a question?
No.
Sorry.
I don't have a question. I have... I want to make some comments after, based on this. I was going to bring up some points and questions and answers, period, but being as it's here now, I would like to bring them forward here.
Okay, would you like to wait for the questions that are...
Yeah, I'll wait till other questions are there.
Okay, I will queue in again. I'll have you queue in again, and then I'll get your comments. Councillor Yonetsky?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Drewitz. Very interesting presentation that you made here. You mentioned several times of councils' non-actions, and you've got some recommendations here as well. Did we not have actions that you thought were maybe by asking those questions relevant? And if they weren't, what are you really looking for from this council? These three questions that you've... Are these three points you've got at the end, or something else?
Well, Councillor Yonetsky, I want to remind you of what... of the minutes of the May 27th and the June 20... or June 10th meeting. When you received the agenda for the September 30th meeting, did you expect that report the Thursday before, like September 27th, of the M.I.K. gas rates follow-up, gas supply options?
I didn't even think it was going to be on the... I didn't think it'd be on the agenda. That was a surprise to me.
And you know, I understand that there was one or two other more councillors surprised by that, as I was, and Bob Donald. And I would have thought that what would have been on that report would have been the progress that was made by Councillor Zing's proposal, and I think then Councillor Dan Glenn Graham's proposal, and of the progress of a reasonable, recognizable, and neutral, independent survey. So you saw what you got. Further, let me take it one step further, right to the present. Council... There was excellent debate around the horseshoe. But on the other hand, at the final end, there was no motion. And as a result, it doesn't come to council tonight. And as a result of that, I had to go through hoops over the weekend to be able to speak today on this very important issue that the citizens of Kitchener are entitled to get some answers for. I hope by giving the answer the way I did, I trust you understand what I mean by firm, spelled out, and more detailed action and proposal.
Well, thank you. Seeing your last point, you asked that Councillor Gazola be involved and be directing this. Why?
When Bob Donald brought this issue before me, and I looked at his paperwork, and we got together, we did some research, as much as we could, then I couldn't believe what I was seeing. We couldn't believe what we were seeing. And I wanted to make sure that we were on the right track and not blown in the wind. And I know from Councillor Gazola's experience and theoretical background that he's completely cognizant of what is happening with this utility and so on. And so we met together in our kitchen, and I could see that he knew what he was talking about, and at the same time, I know that he was surprised. And Bob Donald and I feel that Councillor Gazola has proven this more than once, that he definitely has the feet on the ground, and he knows what the customers of Kitchener Utilities and the citizens of Kitchener require from an inquiry, whatever you want to call it, or an audited number.
Well, appreciate that answer. I'll let Mr. Gazola speak for himself on this statement. And last question I have, doing a further review, is it going to cost... It's going to cost us money, I think, to some degree. I don't know what it'll be. But do you think we should be going in that direction and paying to do a review of some type?
I'm going to say absolutely. That's a short answer, just I'm going to give at least one sentence. You know, I would rather spend $150,000 to $200,000 to save $2 million. So the answer... The plain answer is yes. But everybody needs to do their homework.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you. Councillor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And then I also have a question of staff, so I don't know if you want that now or after the delegation's done. Anyways, my first question to you, Mr. Drewitz, is you understand that we are under contracts and are obligated with regards to the supply that we can't get out of at this point?
I'm not so sure of that. I'd like to have that proven.
Okay.
I'd like to have that proven. I understand that if we want to get out of those contracts, there would probably be a cost. But again, there should be a return on the cost benefit analysis done.
Okay.
I haven't seen the contract, so I can't answer that specifically.
Okay. My next question, I've asked this to you before, and the reason why I'm bringing it up again today is because you've now spoken... You speak on behalf of your taxpayer group, which I've asked you before, what the makeup of that group is and how you can become a part of that group. But you said specifically today that you're now speaking on behalf of the citizens of Kitchener almost in its entirety, is what my understanding was. I want to understand how you can stand there and say that you represent the voice of the residents of Kitchener.
Well, I guess I didn't mean to come across entirely that way, councillor. But I can tell you, with the coverage that was in the Waterloo Region Record last Tuesday, with the coverage that was in the Kitchener Post on Friday, and with the editorial board editorial on Saturday, I think there's a lot of buzz in this community on this subject.
Oh, I wouldn't disagree that there's buzz. I'm just saying, it sounded as though you were representing the voice of the citizens of Kitchener.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to mislead that.
That was your word. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. That's all my questions for the delegation, but I do have questions of staff when...
Okay, we'll take questions of staff after the delegation is done. Ms. Councillor Gazola, you've already popped up. Are you asking a question, or are you going to... I'll put you back down at the bottom if you want to wait till the other questions are asked. Sorry.
Asked a lot of questions of staff during the past week. So no, I would... I want to bring a proposal forward.
Okay, once the questions are asked, I'll click you in again. Councillor Davy?
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. I do think this is a very important issue. I just wanted to clarify two specific things that I've heard some misinformation from in the media. The first is that, just want to make sure that you're aware, Mr. Drewitz, that whether the rate... the gas rate is three times the rate for Union, for example, or less than the rate for Union Gas, you understand the City of Kitchener does not benefit or profit from that differential whatsoever?
I totally understand that. But councillor, the city of... the customers of Kitchener Utilities are paying more than what they should, and that's the issue.
I don't dispute that. I'm just making... I just want to be 100% clear that the City of Kitchener does not benefit from higher gas rates.
I got that.
Okay, very good. Secondly, I'm just looking at your comments about an inquiry, and you did follow up by saying there would be potential to save us money, whereas, as it's written here, it only looks like you're curious as to how much more residents have paid. So I'm just... I don't understand exactly how you think the inquiry would save us any money.
I'm sorry, you want to ask your question again?
Certainly. I don't understand your point three, an inquiry completing an auditing firm. Could you give us some idea as to how much more we paid for natural gas due to the October 26... 2006 policy? I don't understand how you see that translating into savings in the future.
I'm not sure that you can have savings in the future. That depends on the policy. But I'm saying if the 2006 policy would be more firm and more balanced, as opposed to having 72% at one time of the gas required for the customer's usage on fixed contract, as opposed to, say, 50/50, like not putting all your eggs in one basket, the City of Kitchener Utility customers would have had to pay less for gas. And what I'm saying, obviously, with this inquiry, there would have to be some assumptions made. And if an assumption is that if we would have only bought in futures contracts 50% of the City of... of the customer's usage on fixed contract versus the market rate, then what is that difference? And that is what I'm trying to get at for the last four years, at least. And I know this goes into 2014. So yeah, starting in 2009, if the City of Kitchener... This is just an assumption. If the City of Kitchener Utilities would have only had futures contracts for 50% and bought market rates for the other 50%, what was... what would the combined rate have been for a City of Kitchener Utilities customers? And what is that difference?
Very good. And to be fair, though, and this is where the whole... This is where it all hinges. You're looking backwards when there is precipitous drop in the price of natural gas. Prior to the recession, for quite a while, actually, Kitchener Utilities was less than our competitors than Union Gas because of our long-term purchasing. So if you go back and look only at what's happened since, you understand there's some armchair quarterbacking there.
Hmm?
There's some... Let me move this way.
No, I'm not doing... I'm not armchair quarterbacking at all.
I'll ask you to speculate.
I'm wondering whether I'm allowed to respond to that and put up a graph?
No, I'll just say, it's just one last question, if you wouldn't mind speculating for a moment. Presuming that there was no recession, no drop in natural gas prices, do you... Would you concede that possibly our natural gas rates might still be lower?
Not to the extent that they are now.
Okay, thank you. I'll have some questions of staff as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Vaganovich?
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming in today, Mr. Drewitz, on an issue that I too feel is an important one. You indicated that you were having all sorts of difficulties on the weekend trying to arrange to be able to be a delegation at council. You're certainly a familiar face around this horseshoe. Have you ever had a problem, whether you came the day of the meeting or registered ahead of time? Have you ever had anybody make it difficult for you to appear as a delegation?
I understand, because there was no motion at last week's committee meeting, and because this is not an item on the agenda, then according to staff's procedures, they do not need to have me as a delegate at this council meeting, and there needs to be a motion from the council, and the majority of councillors need to agree to let me speak. And yes, I was in touch with the clerk's office, and obviously, I think he's my friend, the CFO, and I have emails.
But have you ever had a problem to appear as a delegation, was my question, sir?
Not before tonight.
Right. And again, tonight you didn't. So I just think it's important to emphasize that. In fact, in my years on council, I never recall us ever denying any delegation who appeared the night of, or whatever, whether the issue was on the agenda or not, to speak at council. Earlier to one of the questions, you indicated you had reason to believe we can get out of the current agreements potentially, possibly with a fee. I'm wondering what you're basing that on?
Well, unfortunately, I'm not privileged to the contract... to those contracts unless the staff can tell me that I have access to them. But usually, in almost every contract, any business contract, there is an out clause with penalties associated with Z number of days. So yeah, I'm thinking it's normal to have an out clause.
Okay. So this is an assumption at this point? You're not basing it on any definitive information that's been shared with you?
That is correct, councillor.
You've... In your comments earlier, you were referencing the point you'd like to look at, what if that split was switched to a 50/50 split in terms of futures versus the spot market? What are you basing that number on? Is it just one set of examples, like why 50/50 versus 60/40, or 70/30, or anything else like that?
It's an assumption like four instants. That's all it is.
So you can go 60/40, whatever the assumptions are.
And that's why I'm saying this inquiry and the answers that the Tax Watch Group wants, okay, is how much more have we paid in the last four years for gas from 2009 to 2013? And obviously, there will have to be a number of assumptions made in order to get at that number. We will never get an accurate number. I fully understand that. Okay? So I'm saying some reasonable assumptions have to be made.
Okay. And so the last question I have is you are, as you were answering Councillor Davy's questions, really looking only at the recessionary year since 2008, where all sorts of things changed for everybody, in, you know, whether we're talking about the banking industry, the housing industry, the gas industry. I mean, things changed for everybody post-2008. Would it not be more appropriate to, for example, take a 10-year look at the gas rates and say, you know, what happened over the last 10 years? Which years were lower? Which years were higher? And have a more fulsome look at the issue as opposed to just a narrow period of time?
Well, councillor... Well, Counselor Vavovic, thank you for asking that question and letting me respond. I think you know the graph that Jim Greenbauer put up on May 27th. It was from 2002 to 2013. And if you look at the first portion of that graph, and I wanted to show it, if you allow, it's, it's basically equilibrium, okay? The pluses are almost equal to the minuses. But since 2008, '09, that is not the case. And, and the fundamental question, when you get down to the bottom line, I'm sorry, we accountants, we talk that way, when you get down to the bottom line, okay, is why is it with all this good stuff that the management of Kitchener Utilities and the management of the City of Kitchener got it so much different than the management of Union Gas?
Okay. Well, that's certainly a question that we can, we can endeavor to get answered for you.
Thank you.
I think it is a good question. And part of it, you know, has to do with the way a municipal gas utility purchases its gas and so on, as opposed to how Union Gas and others do it. But that's something I'll have staff explain later on. I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Thank you, Counselor Ionidas.
Thank you, Mr. Drewitz. I have a couple of questions. One of the questions is, we do, can we agree that gas rates are unpredictable?
I would like to think the, the expert consultants would say a qualified no to that question, and here's why. North America, I don't even have to look at what happens in the Middle East for gas. For oil, it's a different story, even though that is changing because of fracturing or whatever this new terminology is called, new method. But North America is a glut of natural gas right now. So, no, it's not as flexible as people believe it is. That's just my opinion.
So you're saying you can easily predict gas rates?
I didn't say that. I said, I said, "The experts."
The experts can predict gas rates?
I like to think so. They have, they have enough knowledge of their, of their field.
Okay. That's interesting, because if they did, then they would all be, we would all know what the gas rates are. So that's, that's interesting. The second question I have is, you're, you're asking city staff to look into purchasing gas more on a spot basis, on a yearly basis? Is that what you're implying?
No, my first, my first reason for coming here, all four times, is for council to set direction and policy for staff to purchase their natu, for Kitchener Utilities to purchase their natural gas. So it's the direction, as said by the mayor several times, council needs to set policy. The detail is done by administration. I have not seen a firm policy of, for this issue containing millions of dollars, if not tens of million dollars, come from this council. And a policy with that amount of money that is seven years old is, is a dinosaur.
Okay. I'm still not understanding your question, because if you're saying to change a policy and that's a policy that is going to be tweaked eventually coming towards us, so in other words, either we buy gas rates at a two-year rate or a five-year rate, you're saying right now the five-year rate's no good, buying gas at a five-year premium. So what are, what other suggestions do you think would be possible for the taxpayers?
I never said anything about two years or five years. What I did say is for council needs to set a firm, precise, and detailed policy, and that is what is missing on the October 16th, 2006 policy. In addition to that, we've heard other councillors say that there's been a major shift in 2008, 2009, that I have to ask the question, why, because of that shift, why didn't that council or any council thereafter, still not, including tonight, up until this point, review the natural gas purchase policy?
Okay, the question is, you know the gas rates are locked in for five years. So realistically, it doesn't make any sense for us to go and break everything, just though we think that there might be a possibility of saving some gas rates. This policy has time to come and be tweaked. This is not an urgent matter. That's the reason why it's not here today.
Really?
Yeah.
I, I still say it is an urgent matter for the customers, for the customers of Kitchener Utilities, and to some degree, the citizens of Kitchener. And we want, for the Tax Watch Group, we want this situation and the policy corrected immediately.
That, that's fine, but if you want to correct it immediately, what kind of solutions are you offering?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ionidas, I think we're just belaboring the point. I'm going to move on to some other, other questions at this point.
Excuse me, Madam Acting Mayor. I'd like to respond to that. I think I've, I think I've, another councillor has asked a similar question, and I think I've answered that.
Thank you. Counselor Davy.
I'm not finished. So my other question is, because traditionally, gas rates have gone low in the last four years because of a recession that was completely unpredictable, no one could have predicted a recession, because if it was, able to be predicted, we would have never had a recession. How would you justify gas rates, how do you justify the City of Kitchener to purchase gas if the gas rates keep going up?
You know, Counselor Ionidas, if you would study some economics, you would know that everything doesn't go up all the time. There are cycles in economics, okay, and that needs to be taken into consideration. There is no question that the 2008, 2009 cycle was one of the worst ones ever, and we definitely know that it was the worst one in 80 years. So, you know, any accountant and BA student or master in, in business administration knows that there's, there's business cycles, and you need to take that into consideration when you sign longer-term contracts, especially for a five-year period.
Okay. You didn't, you just answered my question when you said it's in cycles, meaning it's unpredictable. Thank you.
Counselor Davy.
Sir, just one last question, something I, very, very important point I forgot to bring up earlier. In comparing gas rates, you, in comparing gas rates, sorry, you are speaking specifically about Kitchener Utilities versus Union Gas and/or spot rates, correct?
Tonight, yes.
Okay. Would you, in judging past performance, would you be more comfortable if you found out that of, say, 170 other municipalities that run gas, that run their own gas utility, if the City of Kitchener's rates dating back to 2008 were extremely similar to 168 other municipalities? Not spot rates, not spot rates, other, actual other utilities, not just one, but 168 other ones in Ontario, would you feel more confident in staff's past performance?
I'm not sure I totally understand what you're getting at.
No, it's very clear. You're comparing Kitchener Utilities against one other utility. If there is 168 other utilities in Ontario, I'm not talking about the United States, nothing more else, in Ontario, and their gas rates were extremely similar overall from 2008 to right now, would you feel more comfortable with staff's past performance?
I think staff was, was led astray by the so-called experts that, that Kitchener Utilities Management used.
And 168 other municipalities were also led astray then, assuming similar performance?
I'm sorry, the others, 168 municipalities, they get their, their natural gas from, for lack of a better term, I'll say from the big boys, as opposed to the, to the smaller boys like, like Kitchener Utilities. And hence, that is why the outcry in some people, including, some people in, in the Tax Watch Group want the end of Kitchener Utilities. Because they, because the smaller, the bigger organizations seem to know a lot more information on the history and on the cycles of natural gas than obviously what, what the experts told Kitchener Utilities and what, and what management of Kitchener Utilities and the management of, of the City of Kitchener finally settled with.
Okay. And last question, in terms of, you refer to a scientific, statistical, scientific study. Part of the reason I don't think there was a motion that occurred last week is because staff was clear the point now is to go forward to reengage the public on how they want natural gas repurchased. And you weren't comfortable with that approach. Why?
Because I don't think we can wait till June 2014.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Counselor Singh. I'm not going to go around again. Counselor Singh is, yours is the question. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Singh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think Counselor Davy is going to hit on the last point I was going to ask of. And, Mr. Drewitz, it's my opinion, I think, what you're asking, your intent, and the intent of this council is quite aligned. I think we're all mindful and wanting to limit the exposure and cost to our ratepayers and our taxpayers as well. Now, in your statements here, you've set fairly stringent, strict timeline. And from our earlier discussions revolving this issue, and from comments from Consulzola, and my request for information on a comprehensive review or a survey of our ratepayers, that's why the, the report had come forward on September 30th. And staff in the report outlined that they would be conducting a review in early part of 2014, which would be a democratic process, which would allow our ratepayers to decide the difference between stability or market rate purchasing. And the point that I'm getting at is, do you think that's not maybe a wise thing to do, to direct staff to review that process, give our ratepayers a choice, rather than jumping to conclusions at this point, because there are still a lot of unquestioned, unanswered questions? We don't want it to switch from one to another only to find out we paid too much, or we made a mistake because the overall cost ended up too high. So why the such a short timeline? And why not already go with the mindset of staff and engage in the early part of 2014 review and have those answers, questions answered as well?
Counselor Singh.
Singh.
Sorry. I come from the private industry. When you have an urgent matter such as this, I have burned them in oil more than once, and my, my better half is with, with us tonight. Okay? And I don't see any urgency. I saw no motion at the May 27th committee meeting. I saw no motion at the June 10th meeting. Then I, then you had a six-week break. And then at the, at the committee meeting last week, we had this report that, that at least one of your councillors, and I know that some of you were nodding your head, yes, we, we didn't expect this report, and this is, this is something that we all agree with. So why that waste of time? And that's why I am setting strict timelines, because I think we've already wasted three or four months.
And my quick answer to that would be, this is a huge paramount decision, again, and with a huge impact that could be had to our ratepayers from going shifting models again. And I think staff do have a responsibility to ensure that we, we, you know, we assess going forward to ensure and limit costs to our, to our ratepayers as well. And so, don't you think that's, that's a prudent way to go in, in 2014, early part of it, engage to our ratepayers and give them the decision as to which way they want, rather than, I respect as a, as a single person, I respect your opinion. I may not agree with all of them, but I respect that opinion. Don't you think it should be a democratic process, though, to give our entire ratepayers that choice as to what they want?
The whole, there's, there's no question, Counselor, that the homework needs to be done thoroughly. Okay?
Good. I think that's, that's really where I was getting at, and I respect that, and that's what I think a lot of us will be asking staff to do, to get that information in a timely manner, and then make an appropriate assessment as to how to go forward.
Yep, fair.
That's all questions for you, Mr. Drewitz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions of staff. Counselor Galloway-Sealock?
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate and ask staff to answer a couple of questions. Why did the report come forward to committee on Monday?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, there were three things that council had asked for, for staff to bring back. One was information about the consultation process, which we'll be coming back to you on December the 2nd. Secondly, there was a question about the year-end and whether we could change our year-end to coincide with the heating season, and that information was provided to council as well. And the third thing was the report related to September. The last report you saw was whether we would, could go back to Union Gases or supplier if we chose to. So those were the three things that council directed staff to bring back.
And so that's why the report came forward to us last Monday?
That's correct.
Right. And the reason why there was no motion made last Monday with regards to the purchasing policy is because staff is already committed to doing that and having that review done before the next proposed rate change of July 1st of 2014. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's a number of things we're planning on doing, just to give you a bit of information. In December, when we bring back the report on the consultation process, we also thought it would be a good idea to bring back information about our current purchasing policy, so that council has a better understanding of what our policy is. And we would go in the early spring to start our consultation with the intent of bringing back a policy report for April, and the next rate-setting timeframe would be a report in June. The reason there really is no urgency to do this process quicker than that is based on our current policy, we basically purchased the bulk of any fixed-rate gas that we're going to purchase before then has already been done. So there isn't any significant downside risk of waiting till this, this timeframe that we've already laid out.
So realistically, there's no huge savings, even if we were to look at potentially breaking any contracts that we have? We've already done and used the bulk of the purchase from that contract of five years.
That's correct. And just in terms of breaking contracts, we've already, our contracts are not futures contracts, or we don't buy futures, we actually buy the physical gas. So if we were to try to sell that gas, we'd be basically selling it at market and incurring a loss. So that's why we would not recommend that approach.
So basically, moving forward, the next report, we can anticipate to see what this is on December 2nd with regards to how we're going to consult the public on the, on the review of the purchasing policy for natural gas.
As well as some information on the existing policy, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vavovic.
Just one follow-up question to what Counselor Galloway-Sealock was asking. On this notion of breaking contracts, and, so you're saying all the gas that we've purchased at, at fixed rates is, is, has all been done in a way where the only option that would be left for us is to actually sell it on the spot market?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and as such, that spot market rate is significantly lower right now, correct?
That's right.
And so, any losses would then have to be borne by the utility itself?
The utility itself, and specifically the supply program?
Okay. And so how would that then impact our ratepayers?
It would impact the ratepayers the same way it would as if we carried on with the contracts.
So there would be no difference?
There'd be no benefit.
No benefit to the ratepayer?
That's right. Users, correct. Users, correct.
Um, and we are under obligation with the OEB, um, as I understand it, to ensure that the, the utility is not cross-subsidized by other parts of the, the municipality and vice versa, is that correct?
The cross-subsidization goes within the programs within Kitchener Utilities, so the supply program cannot, um, cross-subsidize with the distribution program or the transportation program.
Okay. But any, um, ultimately, any, any profits, um, that do come from the utility, uh, do go back to the, the, uh, ratepayer through the transfer that goes from the gas utility to, um, to the city's gas fund, correct?
That wouldn't apply to supply, it would only apply to our distribution rates.
To the distribution part, that's right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Rayo-Lewis.
I'm wondering if staff could give me an estimated value of what our gas utility is worth?
We don't have a current, uh, market valuation, it would certainly be difficult to come up with a, a market valuation. Suffice it to say, it's hundreds of millions of dollars.
Okay. Um, my other question is, if we were to go towards more of a, a spot, spot rate market in purchasing our gas, and if gas prices go up in price, because we can't predict them, and they, let's say they go up and price, double the price, how does that affect the, the rate user?
It's going to be the same.
They would have to pay the higher rate as well. We'd also have to look at how frequently we set our rates, um, because currently we set our rates only annually.
So if, if our rates doubled in, on the spot rates, then we would be, they would be charged double?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all the questions of staff. Um, Counselor Yanetsky, you have a question? All right.
Yeah, I was, uh, just trying to formulate some questions here while questioning was happening. Um, help me out on this, does, uh, when staff do a review as to purchasing for the future, um, and as to what, how much to purchase and what rate is out there in the market, et cetera, does that eventually, that decision that staff come to through their analysis, come to council for approval?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Council approves the policy, um, a staff committee, um, makes the decisions on the daily purchases?
Okay, so, reviewing a policy, there's a clause in there that talks about transactions are authorized, the general manager, financial services department, and, uh, signing officers are directory utilities and another person who, from staff. So eventually, the responsibility in a final decision-making is done by staff?
Within the policy, that's correct.
Within the policy, and it doesn't come to council?
That's correct.
In the agreements that have been determined, um, you sort of answered the question, but maybe you can help me out, is there an escape clause? I mean, the allegation mentioned, is there some way to get out of it? Do we have an escape clause at all, and with penalties, and is that worth pursuing?
My understanding is that there, there are confirmed commitments to purchase the gas at a certain price, so in order to get out of that contract, we'd basically have to sell that contract at current market rates.
You have to sell the contract based on current market?
Correct.
Yeah. It's not like a mortgage, when you get a mortgage, rates go change, you want to get out of your mortgage because it's a five-year, and you try to renegotiate, but there's a penalty, you, you pay it off because you're still in the long-run saving. It's not worth pursuing?
It doesn't work like a mortgage, no.
Okay. Last question I have, um, we are a nonprofit municipality in terms of the way we operate this particular utility?
The supply program is a nonprofit, um, operation, yes.
Okay, and Union Gas is a for-profit organization?
Yes, that's true.
Yeah. And yet, their rates are lower than ours based on what I've been gathering from information being passed on and concerns raised by the, by taxpayers?
Right now, they are, and that's because their purchasing policy for gas is, is different than ours. It's all based on spot market, and they update their rates quarterly based on, um, the Ontario Energy Board requirements. Um, we update our rates on an annual basis.
On an annual basis?
Correct.
Right. And I think it was mentioned at the last meeting that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that, uh, our objective here, municipality's objective is to satisfy the residents of Kitchener to have a stable rate as opposed to a fluctuating rate that is reviewed on a quarterly basis?
Yes, that's our, the basis for our policy setting.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions of staff. Um, Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I have a, a number of points that I would like to make, and, uh, now since I'm here in tonight, uh, there are more things coming forward. Uh, I've, I've gone back to review the, the minutes, and, and since we have been vague, a little vague in what we're going to do, and, you know, and rightfully, I think, I thank Mr. Drewitz for coming in, I think, uh, we do need, I, I think we do need to move quicker on this, or we need to, we need to have a good look on it. Uh, we've had, we've, there's been an awful lot of discussion tonight, and I must say, uh, we're having a debate with a, with a delegate who really isn't, uh, either elected or a specialist in the field. I think we need to keep more of our debates at the table here, but I do appreciate the, the points that have been brought forward, and I think that they're, they're all, a lot of very valid points. I, I've spent a fair amount of time during the past week trying to review this again, and, and that's another beauty of having a weekend between, uh, committee meetings and council meetings, and, and I, and I, I reiterate, excuse? When this point was brought up last week, I stated that, that the reason it would came back to us was that I had asked at, at the May 27th meeting for, for two or three of those things. One of them was the possibility of changing the fiscal year, and the other one was of, of getting back and, and sort of somewhat riding along with Union Gas. And a report was brought back, I'm still not convinced that we can't do that, but that, that is something I, I, I'm, I'm hoping we will look, looked, uh, look at again. I think we really need to look at, and it's the policy, we need to look at the policy. We, we have, we have a good policy in place for, uh, purchasing, using, purchasing investments with our interim excess cash that we have on hand, uh, and it's a strict policy, says you can only invest so much in this kind of a bond and so much in that kind of a bond, and, and it's the same sort of thing that we need to get to here. Okay? My, the purpose, my purpose of wanting to speak to it tonight, I was hopeful that we could bring back, uh, bring this back sooner rather than later, and staff now have indicated you're going to bring back something in December where you're going to talk about the policy. Like, and I, I hope that is what, what that is going to do, and I don't, I don't think we need a motion to, to ask for that. I think staff are not blind, they see what's going on, and they're, they're going to bring that back. As far as, uh, I think we can work with the policy, we can't do anything right away, uh, because, for example, from now to the end of the year, we, we're sixty-eight percent of our, our purchases are tied up on, on, on the fixed market. But when we look at, uh, I look forward at, uh, you know, 2016, and, and the rate gets down to nineteen percent, we're, are, are tied in, uh, in the following year, only ten percent, so now's the time to look at the policy. And I, I believe that, uh, that, uh, if we review the policy, uh, I, I think we, we can improve upon it. I did spend a considerable amount of time on the weekend looking at my own gas bills to try to come up with, you know, the impact that it has been on Kitchener consumers. And, and I think, in, in fairness and to be transparent, I, I'm going to tell you what I came up with. Now, I don't know if I'm a, uh, uh, an excessive user or a normal user or whatnot, I consider that I'd be probably normal, but I, I do, when I was looking at the rates, and I, and I brought this up back in May, that from between 2008 and 2013, we've been paying ninety percent more for supply, just for the supply portion. Well, I, I went through and did, redid all my gas bills for the four years, for the four years between July of 2009 and June of 2013. Uh, that's a four-year period, and that, over that period of time, the differential on the supply was ninety-five percent more. Personally, it cost me, over the four years, an extra twenty-one hundred dollars. When you take into account, then, you also have to take into account the other factors, the delivery, the transportation, the fixed charge, and the HST, and when that's all taken into account, the difference for me, for my consumption over the four-year period was two thousand three hundred and forty dollars, about five hundred and eighty-five dollars a year. Well, to me, that, that states that it, it is something serious that we need to take a close look at, and we need to look at it, uh, sooner rather than later. And I'm taking staff's word that we're going to look at it in December, that, that we will look at, at, at the policy. Okay? I, I know, uh, and I, I'm, I'm still not convinced that we can't work closer with Union Gas, but that, that is something that we, I am hopeful that we can look at. Uh, we, we need to, we, I think, we need to have a better policy in place. We've, uh, uh, we've had, we've had a real bad look, uh, at four years, but if, if you look back, and, uh, and I want to emphasize this, that, uh, uh, I've been looking at this for thirty-five years, and for most of that time, most of that time, our rates here have always been better than, than the Union rates in, in our neighboring areas. So, we, we've had a, we've had a hiccup, uh, for the last four or five years, we, and we, we're seeing it, and we need to do something about it. Generally speaking, uh, I, I think, uh, we've been served well by our utility. You know, for the majority of the time, it's, it's, it's been going the other way. Uh, we're, uh, and we're, you know, I'm reading the paper, it, it says, you know, why are we even in this business? We're in the business because we hung on to our utility. Every municipality, almost every municipality had their own utility, and one by one, they sold it off, made a quick dollar, spent the money, that's it. We've had our utility, uh, we've done well by it. It's because we've had a hiccup in this, and, and it's been pointed out that the municipality, we don't do anything better, we don't make more profits because the supply, because of the supply. The supply has to break even. So that, that, that's something we've, we, yes, we have been paying more, I think, uh, I, I'd asked staff for a, for a whole series of information on what our supply has been. I went into, uh, into a, a, a program looking at if there's a different split on what you purchased on the spot market as opposed to what you have on, on the fixed, and it is interesting, the, the difference, the, the differences that come up. Uh, if we were riding, uh, with Union Gas, we would be strictly on the spot market. Incidentally, those figures that I quoted were what I paid compared to the Union Gas rates and not the spot market rate, which was even better. So, and I do want to emphasize that was a, that, that, that did go from 2009 to 2013, we're still higher, uh, we, but we, we can, by looking at our policy, I believe, we can, we can get out of this. I think we need, we, we need to look at it. That, that was the only purpose I was going to, uh, bring forward a motion, I don't, I don't know that a motion's required, I, I want the, I do think we need to look at it before next July, when we change the rates. I think we need to look at it, I, I was, in my mind, I was suggesting after the budget process, because I know staff i- is tied up, but if, it's so much better if it can be brought back in December. December's a tough month, too, though, that, uh, there are so many things going on. Uh, uh, but I, personally, uh, we, we can do, we can do a great deal with, with the policy, uh, until we get beyond this year, the next year, so personally, I felt that if, after the budget process was done, we came back with a good look at the policy and with decisions as to where we go in the future, and we started looking at that in February. But I would like to nail that down, that it be February, because the minutes have, going back to, to the minutes, I found that we haven't been specific, we've left it up to staff, and, and, uh, maybe it's gone to the back burner. I, I think it's something that should be at the front burner, uh, and I, I, I want to reiterate, the important thing is, this talk about selling the utilities is, is ridiculous, we have a tremendous asset that's done wonders for us, and for, for ninety percent of the time, we've been able to deliver a product at a cheaper rate than Union Gas, and also to deliver a service, I think, that is superior to some of the other utility companies. I know, in the way we've looked after our customers, that, that is another bonus. And, and then the question also is, is if, has been brought forward, if, if, uh, the people that are buying gas are subsidizing the people that don't buy gas, that's, that's not rea- that's not a valid argument. Our residents and businesses are the shareholders of Union Gas and when there's, of, of Kitchener Gas, when there's a, when there's a dividend, everybody gets the benefit of the dividend. Just because you don't buy a, a product of a, of a company that you hold shares in, doesn't mean you don't get the dividends. You have invested in it, you get the dividends. And, uh, just in closing, uh, I, I think, I don't know, but I think the company is well worth over three hundred million dollars.
Thank you, Counselor Gazola. Um, Ms. Houston, you have a comment?
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify something for Counselor Gazola. Earlier, I said, um, we'd be bringing back two reports in December. One was to provide council with an information report about the existing policy, which would start the discussion about the policy going forward, and also the process for consultation. Our intent would be to do the consultation in the early spring and bring back the results of that consultation and a recommendation with respect to the policy in April, and the rate setting would be done again in June as it normally is. Um, the reason there really is no urgency to move that up is we're basically not going to be buying very little, if, if any, um, fixed-rate gas between now and then. Um, so there's, we want to do a credible job of the consultation and, uh, policy consideration, and I think we should take the time to do it well. Thank you.
If I could respond to that, you know, a, a lot of this, though, I really feel we have to do our homework before we go to the public. I mean, the questions that were asked of the public the, the last time, it, the question was, which is your preferred pricing approach? And there were two parts, either stable rates that is consistent natural gas prices over time, that was the one, or variable rates where the price fluctuates up or down with the market. We have to give people a lot more information than that. I mean, a, a, a variable rate with a five percent differential, hey, that's about a variable rate with a eighty percent differential, I don't think they're going to, they're going to answer that. So I, I really, I believe, uh, when we, when we, we go to the public, we, we have to, we have to know our business, and we have to have our, our policies, whether they've been put totally into place, but we have to have a good idea of what our policies should be so that we can deliver. but we have to have a good idea of what our policies should be so that we can deliver on what we're talking about.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Gisola. Councilor Dalloway Selak?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I just wanted to say how we got here was, council set a policy a number of years ago, after we surveyed, the city of Kitchener staff surveyed the residents, and they preferred, which Councilor Gisola just mentioned, the preferred fixed rates rather than the fluctuating rates. And so, that's where this policy has come from. So, sure, it's time now, I believe, to review that policy. In Councilor Gisola's words, that we've had a hiccup in the last few years, and I think that that's what it is. But we made a decision, and that decision obviously didn't favor us this time, but it has favored us in the past. Does it make me happy that we're paying more? No, it absolutely doesn't make me happy. But I think the good news is, is that we are having that review in the short term for the, for this policy, and I think that a comprehensive review is in order at this time. So, I look forward to being able to continue to discuss this in the next number of months.
Thank you. Councilor Yonetski.
Yeah, just a couple of short, short comments, hearing statements made and comments made by staff and other councillors mulling us over here. Unfortunately, we're stuck in the rate, and as pointed out, there's no urgency on this, and I can appreciate where that matter is. And I'm glad to hear that there's no intent to buy any in the next immediate 12 months or whatever. That sort of sits well. I have to agree with Councilor Gisola that we do have a beneficial asset that has benefited Kitchener for many, many years. And it, you know, it's not perfect. We've had our mostly ups, but there's the odd bump in the road or hiccup that we've experienced. And it could be through misjudgment on how it's done in terms of purchasing, and maybe this is where we're at today in terms of it's high where it should be low, and we're sort of stuck with it for the next little while. What I am disappointed in is, having reviewed the policy and looked at each of the points, I wanted to digest it more to understand it, but I see as more generalized than anything else, and maybe some specifics could be added to it. Now, just to wait for staff's input on that eventually. But what really puzzles me, and is a comment that was just confirmed by staff, that staff make the final decision on this in terms of deciding as to when to buy and how much. And I can appreciate it, because that's what the policy says. And we're talking millions of dollars here, millions of dollars. Yet, when other items that are before us as councillors, when we're dealing with tenders, staff have a responsibility to go ahead and deal with matters that are less than $25,000. Anything over that figure comes to council for approval. And here, we're dealing with millions of dollars that we don't even get to see as council in terms of making and decision-making. I think that's going to be seriously looked at as a policy and further reviewed.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Davy?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I concur with essentially everything Councilor Gisola said, and I was especially happy to hear his, him speaking against this idea that I've heard far too many times now about possibly liquidating the asset of our, of Kitchener Utility. If we were to sell it, no doubt, we would get a very large sum of money. But not only would the dividend that we currently enjoy leave Kitchener, it would most likely leave the country. Union Gas, the comparator in this case, is owned by Spectra Energy, which is a US-based business. And it's, you need to look carefully, it's easy to say dividend, you don't know what it goes to, but just, for example, in our most recent budget, $4.3 million was the cost, I believe it was $4.3 million, that came from the gas utility to pay for the Emerald Ash Bor, which, for those who are unaware, essentially is a beetle that's going to cause, that would otherwise cause trees to fall down in the streets on boulevards, something we absolutely have to deal with. Now, if we didn't have this investment, that $4.3 million would be coming from the tax base. We'd have to raise taxes to cover it. So, essentially, looking at the gas utility, it's simple mathematics. If we sell it, we can either, we would either spend the money, we have no further dividend, which puts us in a worse situation in the long run, or even if we were, even if we were to sell it and then invest it in any sort of financial instruments that the cities permitted, the return would be much lower than simply owning the utility as it is. So, I just wanted to be very, very clear that any notion of ever looking at selling this utility in the short term is something I would be very much opposed to.
Thank you. Councilor Vabanovich?
Thank you very much, and I, too, will be brief. I'm pleased that staff are going to be moving this item forward as quickly as possible, but in a way that allows them to do the due diligence that I think both this council and that our ratepayers, the users of Kitchener Utilities expect of them. I think when we do make a decision, and whatever that decision will be, maybe some things will change, maybe some things won't change at the end of that evaluation, they'll have been done after considerable thought and looking at all the options in a fulsome way so that we make the best decision going forward that makes sense. I think the other point that's important to remember, and that is that retrospective history that Councilor Gisola went through with respect to Kitchener Utilities. It has been a significant asset to this community that has allowed us to benefit significantly. It has allowed us to continue to have one of the lowest tax rates within the province of Ontario and have some great services, like our network of community centers and so on, deal with things like the Emerald Ash Bor. And all these things might not have been possible without the gas utility having benefited the community over the years. I, too, concur that I think selling the utility, that notion would be foolhardy. It would give us a one-time injection of funds, and that injection would gradually, over time, disappear as capital wish lists were presented against that, against that fund. And if there was some way to protect it then, and invest those dollars in a way where significant returns could be achieved, well, then maybe, you know, then you would look at it. But the reality is, that doesn't exist. I know it's something that has been talked about in the past, but fortunately, back from the days that our forefathers have always rejected the idea of selling the utility. Successive councils have always taken that same approach and have not put it on the table, and it would hope that this council and any future council would do the same and reject that notion as long as it continues to benefit the community on an overall basis as it has.
Thank you. Councilor Glenn Graham?
Thank you very much, Acting Mayor Fernandez. I just wanted to thank Mr. Duitz and also Mr. Donald for bringing this forward. This is true democracy in action, as far as I'm concerned, just the process alone. You know, every few years, we should have, be open to reconsidering our policies on a major, complex issue like this. And this is hard to follow. It's hard to follow for council, so I can only imagine what it is for the average ratepayer and gas user. So, I really do applaud you for helping to sharpen the pencils on the debate. I also would suggest that it's not going to be solved immediately. You heard reasons why it's not going to be dealt with in the short term. It's not urgent. It's important, but not urgent. So, I think it's important for the process that we get it right, and that we do the proper consultation on it, we do our due diligence, and we have something that actually has a transparency to the question so that people make an informed decision about what their best interests are, and therefore, we have a decision, a mandate, if you will, for the next 10 years or whatever it turns out to be. I am certainly not in support of selling the utility. I think that also would be short-sighted. I think it's a fair question to put on the table, but you're hearing that there's no appetite for that. I think this is a good investment for our city. So, thank you again for helping to bring this forward, and I look forward to this coming back before us in December.
Thank you. And last, Paul Singh, oh, sorry, Councilor Singh.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll try to be brief with this as well. You know, issues like this have a way of being sensationalized, especially in the media. But discussions such as this, and thank you to Mr. Duitz for bringing forward, of having ongoing dialogue about this, if nothing else, it helps for adding better clarity to our customers. If nothing else, from tonight's meeting, we reiterated the same points, that it's not the fact that the Kitcher Utility, the gas utility, is overcharging its customers because it wants to flush its accounts. It's simply, it's not an immediate benefit to us, it's just the way we've purchased or the policy sets its purchasing guidelines. This policy has, as Councilor Gisola, I think his comments were quite sobering and beneficial, because especially more for him, who's been on both sides, on staff and sitting on the council table, him to address that this utility has been a huge advantage to Kitchener citizens and its customers with various forms of its operation. So, this policy has benefited our customers in the past, but economic environments change. And it seems now market rates are lower, so, you know, if we were changed to a different model and buying spot rates, our customers would save money. But that's not to say that ongoing would be the better way to go as well, because if the economy continues to heat up or improve, those gas rates may continue to go up higher, meaning the natural gas resource would be more costly than the market. So, we have to be sobering with that to ensure that we do a proper, comprehensive review to give our customers that option as to the way to go forward. So.
Thank you. Just want a couple of comments as well. I think that both staff and the public have heard that there's a strong interest for the review of our policy. A number of questions and issues have been raised tonight, and I think it's very important that when we move forward with reviewing the policy, as well as when we start with some public input, I think it's crucial that we make sure that there's some meat to those questions, that the public understand what they're asking, what they're being asked, and what they should be asking. I look forward to seeing the report being brought forward in December, and I'd like to thank Mr. Duitz for bringing this forward. Okay, we'll move on to further delegations at this time. First, I'd like to call Mr. Steve Barrows.
Thanks for having me again. I spoke recently about the Victoria Park bathrooms project, and those who saw that presentation know my perspective. And tonight, I'm really only here to bring up a number of questions that have been coming up lately. So, do I believe that it's a good idea to invest in the infrastructure of Victoria Park? Yes, certainly. There have been a lot of arguments surrounding that, and in general, I support that idea. Is heritage important? Yes. A city's heritage forms the foundations that it's built on. Heritage, a strong heritage gives potential businesses and residents the confidence in your city that it takes to attract them, so build on your heritage and be proud of it. Has this building been made more expensive because of heritage requirements? No. Firstly, this is not a heritage building because it does not, it does not address the heritage of the site that it's built on. In terms of materials, the fact that the building is clad in brick and cedar roofing is not a heritage requirement. These decisions are more closely related to maintenance and lifecycle costing. Reducing the cost of materials will not only bring the integrity of the already weak design down, but it will also increase the cost of continual maintenance and replacement. So, what is the role of heritage? Heritage is about establishing and celebrating who we are, where we've come from, and where we're going as a community. The building does not exhibit any of these qualities. Is the building over budget? Well, frankly, I can't answer that. Building projects are just far too complex and too many things going on. But in saying that, The Architect has designed the building you've requested, and there's been a competitive tender to determine the cost of that building. The questions we should be asking here is, is the lowest tender really representative of what the building will cost in the end? Or are potentially one of the higher tenders more realistic? Can we cut costs? Certainly, but not without making sacrifices. What will we be left with in the end? The real question is not cost per se, it's value. And if there was value here, we'd have representatives from the Boathouse, from Blues Fest, Rib Fest, Multicultural Fest, The Architect, anybody standing here behind me to say that this building has to be built because it contributes to the welfare of Victoria Park and what that does to our city. Have we been asking the right questions? The process to now has been one of incremental steps. Never has there been presented to council, as far as I can tell, a real plan or analysis of what Victoria Park really needs. Had that happened, I think we'd be looking at something very different right now. It was only at the last council meeting where we realized there weren't even family washrooms in the building. Have we really looked at how this building relates to its surroundings? Have we really considered if this building addresses the issues that council's trying to address? And what are those issues that council's trying to address in building this building? Have we looked at what the building, how the building relates to other developments in the park? Have we considered the effect that the reducing parking will have on local residents or region-wide users of the park and the restaurant and music venue? Have we looked at how the building will serve the very important role of supporting countless festivals and uses that the park provides? Through my practice, I've come to realize that great ideas only come to fruition through an extraordinary amount of passion and effort. And for that reason, I fight very hard for what I believe in. But there comes a point where you have to allow the collective beliefs to take their course. And for me, that time was when I sit here and everybody voted unanimously in favor of constructing this building. But now, I'm here three months later talking about the same issues, and I believe more than ever that I'm pushing in the right direction. I'm fully aware of the motivation behind getting this building built, both politically and financially. In general, I support the investment that the city is so kindly trying to make in my community. I also support and thank the community members who have been speaking in favor of this project, just not in its current form. Given all the different forces acting on this project at the moment, I hope that the city can see the positive results of this endeavor. More than ever, I think it's the importance that Victoria Park plays in our city has come to light. Other communities can benefit from this funding. Let's vote in favor of putting this money to use where its full potential can be realized, and not some downgraded, haphazard, poorly conceived shadow of an idea. Let's wait till we can do something that will have a truly significant and meaningful impact on Victoria Park. That's it.
Thank you. And I was amiss in pointing out that on our tables, we have your report, our culture, our heritage, our city, and I want to thank you for that as well.
Yeah, sorry. I mean, they should be color and on a big screen, and they're not what should be there, basically.
I can appreciate that. Councilor Etherington has a question for you.
A few questions. Steve, you didn't say, but you're Victoria Park's representative on the Heritage Committee.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And I really appreciate you coming in. We've talked about this, and I had a couple of questions. I'm not an architect, you're an architect. When you present this kind of plan, like this washroom plan, would an architect look at the budget and notice if we were substantially over budget?
Putting me on the spot. When I take on a project, the first thing I do is I look at the scope, and does the scope really match what you're trying to achieve? And then I take that scope, and I develop a budget with that scope. So, yes, in theory, that should have been looked at. I mean, it's hard to know where funds go and how much things are going to cost, so, you know, that's a difficult thing to answer.
And the discussion we had about these washrooms, the ones that are in limbo at the moment, having 12 stalls, could you elaborate on what you were saying about why 12 stalls instead of three stalls?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the whole point about looking at your scope, and that's what I'm saying, you know, has anybody really looked at what Victoria Park needs? Because 12 stalls is going to service about 400 people. And if you really think about how many opportunities there are to have 400 people in the park, it's pretty much next to never. On an average day, you're going to have anywhere between 60 and 100 people there. And when there's a festival, you'll have thousands. So, I don't know, the washroom doesn't seem to fit the purpose, really. If that's, is that what you're sort of asking? Yeah.
Yeah. Because that occurred to me as well. One other quick question, if you were looking at a building, and if you were looking at... at attempts to cut the costs on it, what's your opinion of removing something as extensive as the brick cladding, for example?
Yeah, I mean, it's like I said, you can try and save money, but ultimately, you're not. You're going to be spending that money in maintenance, in repair, you know, not to mention the actual result that you're going to get, the product that you're going to have, you know. You want to invest in something that's going to be there and be a good resource for people. So, I mean, reducing the quality of the product is not really the answer. The only real way to save money on a building is to make it smaller. You can try and cut costs of materials, you'll pay for it eventually. You know, you put asphalt shingles on, well, the asphalt shingles will be replaced, you know, long before the cedar shingles will be replaced.
Yeah. One last question. What's your opinion, when we get to the point, if we get to the point where we're considering alternate locations, despite the fact the public, neighborhood association, working group, and everyone has chosen this location? But if we get to that point, what's your opinion on including the Boathouse in that?
Yeah, I mean, well, we spoke about that, and especially with the situation of the Boathouse and everything that's happening, I mean, it makes a logical, it makes a logical argument to say that they should go there. And one of the reasons, as far as I understand it from what I read, one of the reasons that they don't want to do that is because there's going to be, you know, cross pollination of people, of people who have paid cover or haven't, who are underaged or not, or this and that. And, you know, if you're doing an addition to the Boathouse, it's going to be something that's separate, and really, I don't think those questions need to be raised at all, because it's a separate building or a separate addition, it's got its own doors, you know, it's not part of the Boathouse. It makes sense, the services are already there, there's already building there, you know, you're already looking at the potential of doing a whole renovation and all this. I mean, you'll get a better economy of scale, you know, just the overall cost of each individual stall will go down because you're going to do more building work. So, it makes sense.
And with that idea, we are looking at a totally separate set of washrooms. Should be careful to say that.
Yes, yeah.
Thanks for that.
Yeah, I mean, you just need a wall, and then it's separate.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Councillor Gazola.
Steve, I think you've answered my question, and I want to say that you made a good point about the scoping. Had we scoped it out, a good architect would give us a budget, or give us an idea of a budget, right? And had we done this, we'd have known upfront that the budget that we did have didn't fit, right? We'd have had to change the scope several months ago.
Well, before standing up here, I did a lot of quick reading, just to make sure I had my facts straight, and one of the articles mentioned that the original budget was meant as an addition to the Boathouse. So, at the point where it became a new building, there should have been a new budget established, or the building made smaller.
The other question I have, and discussing this with you last, was whether the washrooms would fit with the Boathouse as a separate entity, not as a facility that would be shared with the customers of the Boathouse. And I think your comment is that this would work.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why it can't work.
It could satisfy what we need, and probably at a much better price.
I believe so, I believe so. I mean, there are issues that the Boathouse is in a floodplain, but there's a big park right there, so, I mean, GRC has to comment about that kind of thing, but, you know, it seems logical that that's a good spot for it, and yes, it could be separate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for appearing. And our next delegate is Mr. Rich Mills, also speaking on item eight.
Madam Acting Mayor, not so long ago, you were standing at this microphone promoting Victoria Park, so, thank you very much, councillors and staff and visitors, thank you very much for giving us a few moments here. This evening's debate about the future of the Victoria Park washrooms can take several paths, and the working group, which I'm representing tonight, it's really tough to figure where to jump into this debate, so rather than waiting to be too late to the party, I thought we would talk now. And I'm speaking on behalf of our citizen members of the working group, Laura Seaman, Bob Sharp, and Jill Armstrong, and my name is Rich Mills. And so, the working group was tasked a number of years ago to discuss with senior staff various things to do with the running of Victoria Park in the future. And from time to time, we've come to council to sort of reiterate from the citizen's viewpoint of that, some of the points that we think are important. We supported and still do the construction of a separate building for the public washrooms when that came up in the past year. It was evident at the time that expansion of the washrooms within the present Boathouse was a no-go, and that for the working group, a separate building was the next best option. But with the concerns council has had lately with the cost of the new structure and its possible rejection of a whole new building, we decided to reexamine the alternatives. In the meantime, the Boathouse situation has changed quite drastically, and it seemed as if there's now an opportunity to go back and look at utilizing that building again for public washrooms. The Boathouse was built in 1929 as a two-story, early 20th century style public building with a certain attractiveness. It was designed at that time to store boats, provide separate change rooms for men and women, house a substantial winter concession area, and provide locker and dressing room space for the local football team. All of that changed drastically in 1967, when fire destroyed everything except the four walls. At the time, in rebuilding the Boathouse, we decided to make it just one story and put a rather oddball 50s modern-style roofline on it. The result has always been an odd-looking combination. Now, it's the working group's feeling that a compatible addition could be made, and since there's already a rather architectural mishmash, it would not have to really jar anyone's sensibilities any more than sort of happens now. I think we'd prefer the building to be the addition to be on the west end towards the bridge, since anything on the east end would approach too close to that distinctive and eye-catching fountain pergola. Now, in addition to the Boathouse now, before a new tenant is in place, we feel would satisfy the public need for washroom facilities and ensure that it would not interfere with what we all hope will be a successfully-run restaurant and music operation. The working group is also on record as supporting a small amount of space within the Boathouse for canoe storage. The successful return of boats in 2013 to Victoria Park Lake, following the multi-millions of dollars spent to in part make the lake suitable for boating again, would seem to cry out for a minimal portion of space to keep boats in, rather than trucking them in and out of the lake edge twice a day across the grassy area. Now, we realize this does not address the need for some form of covered change area for the clock tower field skating rink, which the proposed new building would have done, but that's something that I suppose we can address in the future, perhaps on a seasonal basis. So that's where the Victoria Park Working Group situates itself on this question.
Great, thank you very much. We have a question from Councillor Etherington.
Yeah, Rich, you've spent a lot of time in the park, you're an expert on the park. What was your opinion in general about some of the suggestions that might be included in cutting the costs of the building as it sits at the moment? What's your opinion of those cuts?
Sort of two things, I guess, come to mind. I saw the bold print on the right-hand side of that report, which seemed to, even without the boldness of the font, really drew it up as a negative situation, I thought. You know, four years down the road, you know, a lot of extra maintenance, graffiti trouble, roof shingle changing, things like that. And a number of them were based on, quotation marks, "reducing the heritage value of it." And I remember two weeks ago, councillor, several councillors said it was rather a bad example for council to set, when we encourage our citizens to follow heritage rules in our area, and yet, one of the first things to be looked at when a substantial building goes up in a heritage district is the heritage things, do we need these? So, I was a little concerned about that. So, you know, certainly, none of us are experts in economics, that's part of your deals here, and so, it didn't seem like a lot of money was being saved that would get it down into the area that most of the councillors two weeks ago were comfortable with.
And second final question. I think if I remember correctly, on the working group, that was where the suggestion of a little overhang and change area for skaters came in, and they could go from there at the site that is in limbo, over to the skating rinks. Is that correct?
Well, again, most of you know I'm a history guy, so, part of the history, ever since the rinks were put in that clock tower field, for the first few years, people changed in that storage east end of the Boathouse, which was not part of the restaurant. But that was an incredibly dangerous situation, because you had 2,000 or 3,000 people, a lot of them kids, dashing across Jubilee Drive with their skates on, and people whipping through there, and this is at rush hour time and late at night and things like that. So that was a totally unsuitable situation. So again, we encouraged the city to do something to it, and a little sad to say, that something was two or three park benches just stacked on the side, and it's not a very inviting place to change skates. So when the structure was agreed to in the public meetings and things like that, and it got a generic go-ahead for council, we did suggest that, you know, possibly at less than a huge cost, a little bit of overhang could have been put over, just to give people a little bit of a break and a place out of the wind to sit and change your skates. It's pretty hard to tie hockey skates when your fingers are frozen numb and the snow is blowing and the ice is freezing, so. So that was an addition that we did suggest, whether that was the reason it was put on, I don't know. And again, I don't see it being a humongous saving on that report that came in.
But if, as we've mentioned, if the Boathouse became one of the options, if it did become one of the options, kids would still be crossing Jubilee.
Well, no, I don't think they would be changing skates in the Boathouse, you're not going to give that space up for that, from the proposals that downtown people have worked on so much over the years on this. And I suggested something we could look at in the future, perhaps a seasonal thing. You know, the hockey and skating season down there is perhaps two months at the most. So maybe there's some kind of a marquee or something that could go up, that could, that's a question that I think can be addressed separately, and it doesn't have to be a whole separate structure, which would bring on a number of other problems.
Okay, thank you, Rich, and thanks for coming in.
Okay, thank you. And Councillor Janetski.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Mills. Just a slightly different question on the operation of bathrooms in the Victoria Park area. In the old washroom facility, where the splash pad is, et cetera, you have a little operation of cards that you sell, postcards, in part of that building, and the rest of the building is basically the washroom facility. And you basically operate from Victoria, from May to October roughly, more or less, and those washrooms are also from the same time period open, is that correct?
Okay, what Councillor Janetski is talking about is the comfort station at the back of the park, kitty corner from the pavilion, across the parking lot there. And that building was built in 1910 as a comfort station, in the euphemism of the time. So, we always advertise ourselves as the non-comfort part, and that's operated by the Victoria Park Historical Committee, which is, you know, an arms-length, non-funded group by Community Services. And so, yes, those washrooms now, generally in the past, they were not kept open all year. They were refurbished about 10 years ago, up to health standards and things like that, because they had fallen far behind. And they were not kept open in the winter, mainly because there's so few people at the back of the park in the winter. That is, that's a non-used part of the park, very few people take their kids, grandkids, down to swing on the slides and stuff like that in the middle of the winter. So, you know, apart from a few walkers by, it just didn't pay to heat them up to the temperature. Now, last year, during the, when the Boathouse washrooms were closed because of construction around there, they were kept open all winter long, and the maintenance people back there from the pavilion kept them open. But again, they're, I mean, for skaters to use, you know, that's a long way to tiptoe on your skates back there. Did that answer your question? Yes.
I wasn't heading in the direction of skating, I was just curious in terms of the operation of the bathrooms or the washrooms during the winter season.
Right.
Whether the insulation in the building is unsuitable.
Oh, yes.
Or whether, just like you said, there's just very little traffic to warrant it, because who's going to be playing on that play equipment in the middle of winter when it's so cold out?
Right, well, I believe that they would have to be heated a bit more in the wintertime if they were kept open, because the doors would have to be open and closed whenever somebody went in. When they're closed during the winter, they're just sort of kept at a minimal, like our little operation, the gallery, is not open over the winter. So, the building's usually kept around 55 degrees or something like that, I think.
And then my curiosity basically was that you do operate there, and you're familiar with the history, and I was just looking for your perspective on continuing it over the winter months, or basically not, based on historical component and based on your history and knowledge of that building.
Yes, I don't know what the plans are this coming winter for opening or closing the washrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, you've already answered this question, I think, but I want to ask it again. I take it your committee has met since last Monday, since council discussed...
The working group?
Yes.
Just met by email?
Well, but you've talked, and that you are indicating that perhaps the washrooms at the Boathouse could work, as long as they were separate, didn't interfere with the Boathouse, and that now, when we're going through the process, it'd be a good time to look at that. Did you say that?
Well, that's our, I mean, we've had to sort of have a little leap of faith here, just judging by the feeling on council that I experienced two weeks ago, was that the washroom building was a little against some of your wishes. So, that means there has to be another alternative, is that another new building, the old Water Street Garage, the Core Gallery? But again, with the Boathouse situation having been changed, and, you know, the lease agreement that's, I guess, up in the air a bit now, we thought that in addition to it, which, you know, an architect could, I'm certainly come up with a fairly simple addition on that end, completely separate, completely separate, which would be maintained by the city maintenance people, doors facing some which way, and just like any other washroom building in the city, closed at dusk, patrolled by security. I don't think it has to be the, what shall I say, the heckhole that it was described as being in the past, but that was a whole different situation, because those washrooms had the two different ways to go in and out. And basically, they were open as long as the restaurant was open, even if people just went inside. So I don't see any reason why, even if it's the same building, it can't be treated and run just as a totally different building.
Very good answer, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Vabenevich.
Thanks, I have one question of, actually, two questions, Mr. Mills, and thanks for coming in, since I know you're probably one of the most passionate people I know about the park. In making the comments that you have, would it be fair to say that the group's preference would still be a standalone building?
I would say that that was what we, as a group, agreed upon when the previous options were put out. If you remember, the Boathouse option was almost thrown out immediately on those original options, and the other two, the Water Street Garage, the Core Gallery, just had too many drawbacks to it for that, so this was the best of a bad lot. Now, we weren't in on the design or anything like that, and some, a couple of our members had some very strong feelings on that, much as our previous delegate expressed. But, you know, again, the design was, in effect, presented to us. It wasn't really our mandate to help design the building, except make a couple of suggestions, like the skating change area. And, but, so I think now, without having had an actual sit-down and throw out all the options meeting, we would like to see the structure that was discussed two weeks ago still go ahead, despite its drawbacks, and, you know, you're right, we haven't sat down and said, is that option compared to an expansion of the Boathouse option, which of the one really bounces out now? But this, the design one is so far along, and, you know, and, you know, better, better the design you know, and it's in your hand, rather than, let's hoping somebody can design something nice for the Boathouse. But if that one's dead, this is our preference.
Right, is to look at an alternative at the... Right, is, is to look at, at an alternative at the, at, at the boathouse and I, and I get that and I appreciate your bringing forward an, an alternative. Just on that note though, it would need to be something, just to be clear, what you're saying is, in your view, it would need to be something separate from the existing building.
Well, added on, not, not, not a separate, yeah.
But added on because?
There's no room inside.
There's no room in the existing building.
Especially if I ever should get that little canoe storage space inside.
Okay. And is there, is there at all concern, you had suggested going to the right side of the boathouse, if that was even an option of, of going back to that building. In suggesting it, are you at all concerned that we would lose some of the, the public patio space?
Well, that, that, some of that would be in effect shoved over another, however wide we make it, I don't know. But going the other way, you're getting so close to that fountain pergola, which you just spent many tens of thousands of dollars putting that bright new orange roof on about five years ago. So if you, if you went out that far from the boathouse, you'd be, you'd be right up against, you know, not right up against, but five or six feet from it.
Right.
So it would make the building asymmetrical, I agree. And, but you see, the plans for the boathouse, and I don't know how, you know, how set in stone they are, is to move the current concession stand on that west side, as I call it, down to the east side. So you would have, you know, you would have your concession stand and they, they would, I believe the design shows a small patio out there for them as well, outside, a non-liquor patio for them. So, yes, it would entail pushing that patio out farther and I don't know how much work that involves.
Okay, thank you. I have a question of, of staff as well at the appropriate time and then would like to suggest a, a possible course of action.
Okay, before we do that, I think we'll, we'll, thank you, Mr Mills, for coming in. I think what we'll do is we'll bring the report forward that staff has, has prepared that was in our council agenda and, and then we'll, we'll go forward from that. So, Ms Fletcher?
Oops, sorry. Thank you. Through you, Chair Fernandez. The report you have before you is an information report that staff was requested to bring forward on September, at, at the meeting of council on September 30th, 2013. What we were asked to review is the impact of looking at the Victoria Park Washroom project in two separate phases. So whether we could install the current design footprint for the slab essentially before the frost season and then take some time to look at the building that we might put above the slab. And one of the other exercises we were asked to do was to review changing some of the materials for the building in an effort to bring down the cost of the project. So what we've done on pages two and three of the report is looked at those elements that would not change the current design footprint of the slab and we've made comment on the potential, potential cost reduction and some of the comments or risks that we would have surrounding those potential cost reductions. In addition to those potential cost reductions, we've outlined the impact of some of those changes. So if we are to make significant changes to the design or to the project, it might trigger either a return to our approvals process or in some cases, if we were looking at phasing the project, that takes us to a, a new quotation process for the slab installation and a re-tendering of the project for the building. So either way, we, we potentially will get ourselves back into a timeline for review process. So that's outlined as well. And then on page four of the report, we've outlined some risks of a phased approach and we've outlined a couple of options for council to consider.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a few questions from council for you. Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
Actually, my question's probably not for staff yet, maybe for yourself as chair or for council. This information was asked for and, and it's been brought forward and, and thank you for the report. My concern with, one of the reasons why I didn't want this report coming forward today is because there's a bunch of other information that has been requested and reports to bring forward on October 21st. So while I see in your queue, you have a lot of members of council who are looking to discuss this matter, my concern is that if we continue to move forward this discussion, we're not going to have the relevant information that we are, we're looking for, for October 21st. And again, we'll end up making or attempt to make rash decisions. So I'm, I, I think it's important for us to have all the information in front of us before we make a decision on this because we've gone around this horseshoe how many times on this issue. So at this point, we're not going to be able to probably utilize, including in your report today, the CIAF funding. So there's really no urgency to this matter in my opinion. So I would suggest that this report just be tabled for information and that any questions or debate that we want to have on the bathroom, washroom situation in Victoria Park occur on October 21st.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm just going to turn to the clerk as far as process goes. I just want to make sure that we would be allowed to have questions asked of staff with some consideration that, that we only ask questions regarding the report and nothing else. If we start to steer away from that, then I will cut you off and then we will go to what possible motion to reconsider because I think that that's important. Although we did, I, I do recollect that councillor Vabenevich, you said you had some comments to make. I don't know what that is related to, but I, I just wanted a direction from clerk first.
Through you, Acting Mayor.
Yes, it would be an appropriate approach to take, to have comments confined to the report and then whatever possible motion comes forward as arising from those comments, whether it be reconsideration to deal with that.
You said it, it would be appropriate?
Yep, the approach you suggested, yes.
Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll allow some questions of staff with the understanding that if we start veering into comments about motions or anything like that, that I'm going to cut you off. I think that we don't want to start rehashing all the old information that we've rehashed.
I think, sorry, can I just comment on that? Because I'm not, I'm not asking questions of staff. I just, I want to be clear that my concern is that all of this debate and discussion and questions on this report specifically should also happen on the 21st in conjunction with the other information that we're bringing forward so that we can deal with this issue one time in a comprehensive manner. And so while this information's in front of us, I think it should sit with us until the 21st so that we can devote the time and energy into making a decision that's a full sum decision as opposed to dealing with questions today and then dealing with other matters on the 21st. So I'm, that's my suggestion is to not move. I know procedurally you can, I'm suggesting that we don't and looking, I don't know if there's a motion I can make in, in that regard. I guess, I guess I can, I will defer this report until, if, if that's the appropriate, until October 21st so that we can debate the issue full sum moving forward.
All right, well then, my understanding is a deferral motion would take precedence over anything else. And again, I will look to the clerk for a little bit of clarification. Yes, that's true.
Point of order, Madam, Madam?
All right, a point of order has been called, Ms Councillor Vabenevich.
I did indicate to you that I would like to speak to a, a possible direction on this item before, so I'm surprised that we're taking another motion before the request for the motion that was originally made?
Understood. And I think that I, I understood that you had a possible motion, so I want to, I want to make sure that I've, I'm putting this in the appropriate order.
Well, and I wasn't going to put it into, in, in, in the form of a, of a clear motion necessarily, but if you'll indulge with me for a moment or if councillor Galloway-Seelock would indulge for a moment to allow me to, to bring that forward. I understand that councillor Glenn Graham has a, a motion that he was intending to bring forward tonight. I think one of the complications we've had with this issue is obviously there's, it's one that is bringing about a lot of passion in the community and there's a lot of viewpoints on it for varying reasons. We haven't been able to have a, a full council here. Councillor Glenn Graham was missing the first time we dealt with it. Last week, myself and Mayor Zare were missing when we dealt with the motion to reconsider and tonight Mayor Zare isn't here. I think what would be most helpful is if, if we dealt with this at a time when we know that all of council is going to be present. I communicated earlier today with Mayor Zare and I asked, would he be amenable to calling a special meeting of, of council later this week? If members of council were amenable to that? He indicated he would be willing to do that and the suggestion was on Thursday afternoon so that we can deal with this once and for all with all members of council present. Alternatively, the 21st could be a possibility if that doesn't jeopardize us moving ahead and we can hear from staff on that. But I think it's important to consider that in terms of how we might go forward. And I don't know if councillor Glenn Graham has anything on that.
Right. Just, just a minute councillor, just a minute councillor, I just want to put you on so that everybody can hear you. Sorry?
No, I, there's a deferral motion in front of us and, and it's, whenever that's been brought up, the, the only discussion is to the timing of the deferral. There's no other, now, there's a mention of some other thing that councillor Vabenevich would like to bring, that's not on our agenda, it's not here. So right now, I think we should just deal with the deferral.
Okay. We've got a call for the question from councillor Janetski, but first, I'm going to, just before we go any further, I want to make sure that I understand from the clerk. There was a discussion about a deferral. I gave some liberties to councillor Vabenevich because he did mention to publicly that he did have a motion. I was not trying to ignore that, I just wanted to make sure that councillor Galloway-Seelock had made her comments. Can you please clarify for me what should be going first and what should go second?
Through you, Acting Mayor. Because the deferral motion never received a seconders, it was never technically present before council, so the motion was more a suggestion at that point. So there is no, technically no motion that is before council right now. Right now, it's just been for suggestions and consideration. No motion's been moved or seconded at this point.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
I, I did move, I did, I did move a, a motion for deferral, but there was never asked for a seconders, so that's.
That's, that's correct. Just one second councillor Davy, let me just click on your mic.
Question of the clerk, what motion are we deferring?
Not the report, sorry, the motion is to defer.
There's no recommendation?
That's correct. This report was from information only and that's how I was taking it. We were engaged in a conversation and, and asking questions of staff. That's where we were going until councillor Galloway-Seelock brought up the fact that she felt we should not be discussing this at this time because we have asked for a report on October the 21st. At that, I had already accepted, heard from councillor Vabenevich that he had a motion that he wanted to bring forward. I want to make sure that I'm following the proper procedure without making this any more convoluted than it already has become. So I'm going to, at this time, I'm going to accept councillor Galloway-Seelock's motion for, yes, councillor Davy.
Sorry, there, just to clarify, there's no motion, like, you can't move a deferral without a motion on the floor. There's no motion on the floor to defer. If councillor Galloway would like to move a motion that we deal with this on October 21st, that's different than a deferral. I'm just not sure what I'm voting on to defer at this point.
My deferral is this report. So I'm deferring this report until October 21st to come forward with all the other reports that we asked for in committee last Monday. So it's deferral of report INS 13-094 until the 21st.
Okay.
All right, so that, that's the, that's the deferral that's on the table on the floor. Sorry, do we have a seconders? Okay. That's right, we'll only be speaking to the question of timing. All right. A seconders by councillor Gazola. All right, timing councillor Galloway-Seelock.
I, I, my timing, I think they want to speak to the timing, but my timing is suggested for October 21st because we, during committees, we asked for the other reports with regards to this come forward in order for us to be able to deal with this in a comprehensive way. And I just want to quickly say that in no way am I against the washrooms. I want them, I voted for them. This is just so that we can deal with it appropriately now because there's no rush.
Okay, thank you. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go through my list of people, speaking only to the deferral timeline at this time. Councillor Singh.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think my reasoning for asking for this report, some may think different, to ask for it to come sooner than the October 21st date was because it was a matter of timing. It was to ensure that we still had the capacity and, and the ability to capture the CIAF funding. If others want to call it quits, that's up to them and their rationale, I'm not prepared to do that. My original opposition to the initial motion was more to the, the economics attached to it, it wasn't to, because I was against the bath, washrooms being built in Victoria Park or the, the reasoning for them. So my question of timing would be, can we still capture the CIAF funding if this report were to be deferred along with the other reports coming back in October 1st? And at that point, if council were to say, yes, we want to proceed forward with the original motion, have we already passed a certain threshold where laying in the, the foundation would be far too late, which would be difficult to meet the March 31st deadline, which is the, the CIAF funding?
Ms Fletcher, can you answer that or do I have? Okay, hold on one second here.
Just one second. There we go. Through you, Madam Chair, I'll do my best to answer the question. What I can say is the, each week that we are delayed, the challenges and the risks related to weather go up. You know, so if, would staff do their best? Absolutely. We would do our best to achieve the project and within timelines. What I might suggest is if that were the case, that we were to go ahead after October 21st, then we would want to be in communication with council should we run into any complications on the project and we anticipate that costs would rise because of winter heat or because of difficulties in achieving the project. So that's the best answer I can give you. It really is an inability to control the weather.
Right.
Okay, and Mr Gordon, you had a comment here as well? Nope, you accidentally clicked on, okay. Thank you. Is that it?
No, I'm not, I want to speak, can I speak to that?
Just to the deferral only and how it relates?
No, I would like to make a comment as to why I can't support the deferral. I think councillor Vabenevich.
No, point of order.
You can only, you can only speak to the, the timing of the deferral?
I am speaking to the timing of the deferral. I said two words before a point of order was made, I, I'm sorry.
Come.
Comment on the deferral.
On the timing?
On the timing, yes. Would I have the latitude to complete my sentence? Thank you. I would be reluctant to support the deferral motion to the October 21st because as Ms Fletcher has outlined, that we are further jeopardizing, losing on the funding. I think there may be appetite for still looking at the initial motion and I think deferring it to that date may put us at a timeframe where we may not be able to capture that funding at that point or a reduced funding. So based on that, I can't, can't support the deferral and I will look forward to some of the recommendations that may have come as they've already been placed.
Councillor Etherington, only to the, the deferral date.
As if I do anything else, Madam Chair.
Can you move your mic up a bit more? I'm having a problem hearing you.
I said as if I do anything else. No, my only comment would be, we're going to waste two weeks and I still think in those two weeks, we risk kissing goodbye to that 200,000. So I'm against the deferral. I think we can speed it up.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gazola.
I think October the 21st is the perfect timing. That's what we asked for last week. I had asked for other things and we, we set it all aside and said, we're going to bring it back on October the 21st. We've had two votes on this. We've had two votes on this issue, and they've both come up negative. So now, the answer was that we will look at something different on October the 21st. Nothing has changed from then. So I am surprised that staff have gone away and tried...
Councillor Gazola, I'm going to just caution you. I want you to stay only on the deferral, please.
I'm going to talk about the deferral. I don't think, I think the deferral is proper. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Councillor Vabenevic?
Thanks. Just a couple of questions on the timing of the deferral to staff. If we go to the October 21st deadline, or timeline, does it still meet the 60 days that the contract is normally valid? The tenders, rather?
Through you, Chairman Fernandez. The 60 days are 60 working days from August the 29th.
So October 21st would still meet that obligation, then? Well... Yeah.
Sorry, Councillor Gazola, I'm going to caution you, please.
Again, I'm not going to go there right now. On the, just further on the issue of timing, is there work that you and your team can do, Ms. Fletcher? With respect to continuing to dialogue with the contractor? To continue to look at some potential prep that wouldn't necessarily be wasted time in the intervening period?
Councillor Vabenevic, you're starting to...
No, I'm asking a question on timing, Madam Chair. I need to know whether or not that can happen so that a decision on the 21st can still be acted upon and preserve as much of the EII funding as possible?
Point of order. And I'm sorry to do this. But point of order, I guess I'll ask the clerk. The tender that we have, are we, do we have any ability to work with that tender anymore because it's been defeated twice? So is that even relevant at this point?
Clerk, are you able to answer that question? Mr. Goodeve?
Through you, Acting Mayor. I, Robert's rule states that any motion that is, that has substantially the same intent or has substantially the same question would deem to be out of order. There is a certain amount of interpretation with respect to the tender as to what's acceptable. It would come down to whether or not the chair would accept a motion whereby the rescoping of the tender is done so it substantially or significantly changes the tender enough to make it acceptable to the chair. So there is a bit of interpretation that's required by the chair to determine whether or not a motion on the tender would be acceptable.
Thank you. Okay. And I believe that Ms. Fletcher was just asking, responding to Councillor Vabenevic's question of whether the timing would allow them to work with the contractor. Can you ask another question?
Well, I didn't get the answer to that.
I have, can you click on your microphone, please? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair. If we go to page three of the report, the only thing that I would see us doing prior to council making a decision is maybe lining up some permits and locates, but, you know...
Okay.
And then that would be in preparation for any decision council makes.
Okay. But just to be clear, on your answer, I think originally to Councillor Singh, if there was an October 21st approval, could we not still finish the project in a timely manner for a March 31st deadline? What has the contractor said to us?
Through you, Madam Chair. We would make every effort, as I said before, barring inclement weather or challenges with weather, we can likely finish.
I'm going to move on.
Okay.
Councillor Glenn Graham?
Thank you very much. I won't be in favor of the deferral. The original question was never put on the table. There was an amended question that was defeated, and it was, the reconsideration was voted down. I would like an opportunity to consider this with a full council. I would like to support the concept of a meeting to Thursday, and therefore, in terms of, I guess I could support a deferral till Thursday. Beyond that, I couldn't. So it's up to Councillor Galloway-Seelock whether she would amend that to Thursday, or if she wants to maintain October 21st.
Councillor Galloway-Seelock?
My whole reasoning is to deal with it comprehensively, and I don't believe we've asked staff to do that. And unfortunately, I'm not available Thursday afternoon. So if we want to deal with this a full council, I'm not available on Thursday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. And neither am I for that point. Councillor Janetski?
Well, short and sweet, and without pontificating, I'm supporting the deferral to the 21st as initially indicated that we'll get all the rest of the reports, and they should be all considered comprehensively.
Thank you. And Councillor Yanis?
I am a little bit reluctant to support the recommended deferral, but in light of the news that some members of council won't be present on Thursday, I will, I'm willing to support the deferral and get the comprehensive view, even though it's not the preferred option. And hopefully, we can get in enough timing in there to move the project forward.
All right. I'm going to call the question. Recorded vote has been asked. Ms. Fletcher, did you have? Somebody's just clicked. Nope? Okay. Thank you. All right. Recorded vote has been asked and called for. We're asking about the deferral of this report to come at the same time as the other reports that were requested by, I believe, Councillor Davy. Is that correct? And Councillor Singh?
Yes.
For the 21st of October? All right? All vote? It's just going to take a minute for it to come up on the screen. And the deferral passes. It's carried. Thank you. All right. We can move on to other items on our agenda. All right. So the next item on the agenda would be, I just flipped over my page. We're on to reports of committee? Oh, sorry. I apologize. I'm sorry. Councillor Gazola? Did you click your... Yep. I apologize. Okay. I apologize. Sorry. Can you just say that again to your mic, please? No, leave your mic on so that I can... Thank you. Yes, Councillor Gazola, what were you going to say?
No, I'll move the tenders. But I also have a question.
Okay. All right. So we'll move to the tenders. And your question on the tenders?
It's on the consulting services. I'm just, I would like to know, I know what this round is costing us. How many times has this firm done this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding is that they have done this twice before for the city of Kitchener.
Okay. And what was the previous cost of this?
I don't have that information at my fingertips. What I would say is that through staff and Compass Kitchener working together on this, they were quite open to having different bidders or different consultants do this work, with the interest of perhaps getting a different perspective this time, using a different consultant. But I think what, one of the strongest factors in favor here was their knowledge of the municipal environment, their understanding of municipal services, and that was persuasive to the selection committee.
That's the reason I asked the question. I thought it would be interesting to have a different, and there were some very good firms listed there, to have a different firm with a different perspective. Look at it, and I wondered if the cost was a factor, because this firm has done it quite often. Are they coming in with a better cost for us?
Through the chair, certainly cost is one of the factors. I think in this case, though, it was not the persuading factor. The persuading factors were a number of other ones, which included a thorough understanding of the municipal environment and the needs of a municipality in this type of surveys.
Actually, I can answer that question for you, Councillor Gazola. Last time, it cost us $69,000 by the same company, and Veronix did it. And I had asked these questions of Mr. Gordon earlier today.
And what was that year?
That was in 2009. Okay? All right. Any other questions of the, Councillor Janetski? Question of the tenders?
No. There's a delegation here and another item, so I want to bring it forward.
Okay.
Finish the tenders.
Okay. Thank you. We'll finish the tenders, then. Councillor Davy, any questions of tenders?
Yeah, actually, on the same tender. Question, if council were to vote against this tender, based on, again, based on the, wanting a different perspective in Enveronix, would defeating the tender still permit it to come back, looking at the other parties?
Through the chair, my understanding is that defeating the tender would prevent it from coming back. I think that if your intent is to refer it back to the review committee for reconsideration, that would keep it alive. But I reassure council that the committee went into this with the idea that having a different perspective from a different consultant would add value and put a priority on that. When it all came down to it, they were not persuaded that the other consultants were giving added value, even though their perspective was fresh and different. That the committee was persuaded that Enveronix itself had a refreshed perspective since 2009, and its understanding of the municipal landscape was something that put it ahead of the other bidders, or other consultants.
I would move that we refer it back. And I'd like to speak to it if I could.
All right. We have no other questions of the tenders?
First, we need a seconders for that.
Yes, we would need a seconders for that. Councillor Singh is seconding that.
Thanks. The reason I'm doing it is simply because, again, I really think, well, two reasons. First of all, I think the second perspective is incredibly important. And the main reason is, I remember when we were first, one of the first things we did when we were elected to this horseshoe, is we sat through the Enveronix presentation from 2009, and there was, what I thought, a fundamental flaw in the data. Primarily, we were told quite clearly that the data told us that the citizens preferred higher services, even if it meant higher taxes. And I think, and the problem is, I looked at the actual survey myself, and it didn't permit the option of any sort of maintenance of services. And again, I think that's a fundamental flaw, and it's one that's always stuck with me. And we had followed up with our survey on our own, and we did, in fact, find what I think to be a very different result, that the majority of residents would like to see a maintenance of services with tax increases as close to inflation as possible. So with those two items sticking with me through these years in council, I would ask that we look for a different research firm to look at this. Because this work is very, very important.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Wilmer. Just trying to find you. Can you? You're on. I don't need to click you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would note that in the request for proposals, our criteria are already set out. And so the evaluation of consultants is done based on those criteria, that if council's going to send it back, essentially, it means that we would need to re-tender. I would, again, reassure council that we are in control of the questions that are asked. And we, so even though Enveronix has experience in this, and they would put forward their sort of a slate of questions as how they might normally go about this, and how we might benchmark against other comparator communities, at the end of the day, we do have control over what questions are asked and how they're asked. So if that's council's concern, we can certainly take that back and make sure that those are addressed in how the survey is constructed.
Sorry, you've, I'll put you back on. Yep. Okay.
Okay. I'm okay with that, because they have to follow standard procedure in terms of the surveys. But can I take, then, without moving a motion, that the questions themselves will come back to council for review before, or at least circulated, prior to being submitted?
Is that a possibility, Mr. Wilmer?
So through you, Madam Mayor. I'll remind council that Lori Major, who's the staff person in charge of this exercise, did send a message or an email to council on Friday, just sort of giving you an update, that once a consultant is selected, we've tentatively scheduled for October 1st, a time when that consultant would come and speak to the overall process. We would not normally involve council in the detailed wording of questions, but the community survey as part of an overall discussion of our integrated planning process will be here on the 21st, so certainly, comments and questions that council makes will be taken into account by staff and the consultant.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Councillor Davy?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. I've got, Councillor Singh, do you have a question on the tenders?
Same on, on chair.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you. So I had a similar question to the consulting aspect of this, and that's why I seconded this, similar comments that the results kind of didn't coincide with what I really heard at the door. But that, all aside, my question more is to Mr. Wilmer's comments as to what shows us to go ahead with Enveronix was the fact that they know the community. And when we're looking for a surveyor such as this, I think the protocol, the method which they conduct the surveys are probably quite similar across the board, what benefit do we really gather just because they know this community well? Don't we really want a very objective, clear perspective without going with a certain mindset? That would be a negative rather than a positive, would it not?
Through the mayor, I think my comments were misunderstood. It's not that they know this community, not that they know Kitchener or our organization. They understand municipal government.
And the other ones that are part of the tender group, they haven't conducted as, the nature of their business hasn't conducted as much with municipalities, and Veronix is the most?
That is my understanding through conversations with those on the review panel, that the other consultants were not persuasive in terms of their understanding of the subject matter.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarity.
Okay. Councillor Vabenevic, question on this tender?
Well, just a comment, rather.
Okay.
I will support the tender as it is. I think we have a citizens committee, Compass Kitchener, that has looked at this in depth. I think we need to trust them. We appointed them. We have to give them the latitude to do the work. I think the concerns that Councillor Davy has raised are legitimate ones, and we can raise those with the consulting firm when we meet with them. I do concur, though, that I don't think it would be appropriate for us to specifically get into the approval or writing of the questions, because you can then start setting a very dangerous precedent in terms of, you know, quite frankly, creating questions that lead the citizens to certain types of responses. And that's not the kind of survey that I want to get back in terms of very frank and honest information coming back. And I would just add that to Mr. Wilmer's comments, I do know that Enveronix is, from a municipal perspective, one of the most reputable firms because of their experience across the country in doing... across the country in doing this kind of work.
Okay, we had a mover by you, Councilor Gisola, is that right? Do we have a second, do we have a seconder?
Second.
I know you withdrew, but he moved the tenders, and you'll second it, Councilor Ionitis. All right, all in favor? And that's moved, passed, sorry. We'll go to reporter committees at this time. Sorry, Councilor Yonetski, can you click on your microphone? Yes.
Yeah, could we deal with the Planning and Strategic Committee minutes first? There's a delegation here, sitting for, waiting for consideration of item two on that report.
Okay.
And I'd like to speak to that, too.
Okay, we can do that. With the, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This report was considered last week, with a presentation by staff. There was a number of delegations that appeared and spoke to the matter, and I did chair the meeting at that time. There's one item that was discussed, and it was not considered. However, I did further investigation with staff, and this is regards to parcel 34 and 35 of Sunvest, and they are in a position where their request was to be advanced from priority C to priority B for consideration. I'd like to move that that priority be advanced, and there was discussions with staff, staff did not support it. However, I did talk to staff this past week, and heard their position, and I also spoke with the consultants as well, to get their position. These two properties, these two parcels need to be advanced, because parcel 32 that abuts them isn't priority B as well, and both parcel 32 and 33 need to go hand in hand, because the intricacies of the road networks and servicing requires that they rely on each other. And if one's going to proceed ahead of the other, they're still not going to move any forward in terms of development, because they still need parcel 34. Also in that discussion was the advancement of the Robert Ferry Road, was advanced to priorities from C to B, and is supported by staff, and it happens to fall on parcel 35, which is being delayed. And it doesn't make any sense that you're having one hand go forward and the other parcel not go forward, and you still need all three groups, really, to work together and to move forward. And this report won't be coming back for two years, because it's a two-year type consideration. And 35 cannot go ahead until 34 goes, but it has to rely on the study of what the Robert Ferry Road, which has been given a priority B, has to go forward, and it all just ties in. I'm looking at it from a planning perspective, because I've been involved with these lands back years ago, and I see the problems of them sitting around separately. And they have been sitting around separately for many, many years. And unless they work together, and the developer consultant from parcel 32 has no objection to it, because it's in the staff report that they support 33 and 34 going forward, it's just that staff were reluctant, saying that there's been no preconsultations on parcels 34 and 35. And of course, there haven't been, because it's priority C. And if you've got priority C and D, there is no preconsultations. It doesn't make any logical sense where staff is mentioning that. You have to have it as priority B. And the only way to work is that this has to be advanced. Otherwise, you're going to still have, still make, two years from now, and you're not going to any further. So that's my motion to advance parcels 34 and 35. I need a seconder.
Mr. Wilmer is here to, I believe, answer to your comments and questions.
Perhaps you'd like to have a seconder before I?
Yeah, I would need a seconder for that, sorry.
I'll second.
Councilor Gisola will second it?
I'll second.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. So my recollection from Mr. Stevenson's comments last week is that for parcels 34 and 35, which are recommended to be priority C, applications would be received, applications would be circulated, and they would be considered together with the priority B parcels in the area. One of the key differences between priority C and B is eligibility for a credit refund agreement. That's where I think we would reinforce for council, we do not want to see an unusually large number of properties recommended as B, because that makes them eligible to be considered for credit and refund agreement. So Mr. Stevenson did offer that assurance, that these applications, if made, would be received and would be circulated with the priority C and B properties together. He acknowledged that they needed to be considered as a unit.
Okay, your mic is still on, Councilor, Councilor Yonetski, your mic is still on, if you want to?
Oh, okay, sure, okay. I can understand where Mr. Wilmer has spoken on this, and I can understand where Mr. Stevenson was coming from. But the whole objective is not whether money will be in terms of financing, that's down the road. It's processing the applications up front. If one, if they don't go together, nothing moves. And that's the key essence, where the developer wants just consideration. And the whole factor on this is the extension of the road is the key before anything can still move forward. The extension of Robert Ferry, where is it going to be located? Parcel 34 is one of the suggested locations, sorry, parcel 35 is one of the suggested locations, and nothing can be processed until that road is established. There's an official plan amendment that's been filed just a month ago by the developers in the area, so they can work together. And this is what I'm just coming from, so they can work together on this.
Mr. Wilmer?
I don't believe there was a question there.
Okay. Councilor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I'm not going to be, I'll support the staff report. I think that there's a lot of rationale in what staff have put forward, and I believe that each parcel can work independently, as well as be planned comprehensively, in both the priority B and C categories. I've seen it work in the areas that I represent. And I think if we start to tinker with the staff recommendations, that if we do end up ever at, with an appeal on these properties, that it makes our stance a lot more difficult. So I think it's important that we support staff in this growth management, and as we've heard from Mr. Wilmer, they can still move forward with processing applications, and that really the only difference is, is the front-end servicing agreements. So I will not support the, I don't know if it was an amendment or a motion, but I will support the staff report from committee on Monday.
I believe it was a motion to move it forward. And Councilor Gisola?
Yeah, I'd like to ask staff, can these properties be deferred? Can we pass everything else and defer these properties? Just this decision?
Through the acting mayor, yes.
Okay, the reason I ask that, I'm not, I don't like to hear this problem with the front-end financing, because we've got problems with our development charges going down the road.
A little closer.
And I would like to wait and see what that looks like, at least for this year's budget purposes, before we make a further decision on this. So I would support them being deferred, but if they're not, I don't think I can support it.
All right, Councilor Yonetski, is that a friendly amendment?
Well, I have no objections to a deferral, as long as we can still move forward. I gather you're looking for some more information. I understand we do have a problem with the development charges, and things can't go forward until this development gets to the stage where it gets consideration for draft approval, and that's not going to take place in this two-year term, as I would see it. All it means is just trying to work with one developer, because of the design and the shape of the abutting properties, none of them can go, and they've been sitting there for years. And they can't move forward unless they work together. And that's only to get the plans on the table circulated for consideration for advancement. And that's where I'm coming from. I'm prepared to defer to the next, this portion to be deferred to the next committee meeting, if that's what the case. But I'm not too sure what the implication would be on the balance of the report. Do we prove that? I'm just looking for maybe the CEO for a comment on that, and just leave this item out, or do we really have to consider them together because of the nature of it?
Mr. Wilmer?
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. My understanding of Councilor Gisola's proposal is that just the two parcels in question be deferred, the rest of the report be approved, the status of those two parcels would be as of the previous growth management plan from two years ago. So they would still have that status until such time as the deferral is resolved.
Okay. Okay, so then what we'll do is we'll take two separate votes.
We've got to go through the deferral first.
We've got to go through the deferral first, so we would defer? Oh, sorry, yeah.
I was looking for a much longer deferral, not just on the next committee meeting.
Okay.
I'm looking for a deferral of at least six months.
Doesn't work that way.
All right, so are you saying that you would not accept that?
Well, a deferral for six months doesn't do any, do anything. I mean, the answer could be provided within the next two weeks, quite easily, by staff. They've already taken a position, just a matter of now getting into more in-depth analysis, and we can go back in two weeks.
I don't think I can see an answer until, let's see, what their development charges look like for at least the coming year. So, and I don't, that's coming forward with our budget in December, right? So it would have to be deferred till after that.
So the deferral would actually be until after our, after our budget was?
And our budget date, I think, is January the 28th, or something like that, and I would think the deferral should be until after that date.
Okay. Mr. Wilmer, I just want to check with you, is that possible to defer those, the decision of those parcels till after the budget?
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor. Essentially, the key piece of information that will inform council on these types of decisions is the new development charge background study. And so that's a little more than a year away, or sorry, that's June of next year. So it's more than six months, but not, certainly not within the short period of time. So just to add to that, I think that the issues that Councilor Yonetski are raising are different from the issues that Councilor Gisola is raising. And so I assure council, once again, as Mr. Stevenson did last week, if applications are made, they'll be considered, they'll be considered in conjunction with the abutting properties, they will be considered as a unit. This is not delaying the processing of subdivision applications. It's not like the old staging of development report. The key thing here is eligibility for credit and refund agreements. It is primarily a financial management tool. It's growth management, it's not staging of development.
Great, thank you for that clarification. I think that I would agree with you that we've, staff has done a great job on this growth management, they're managing it with the fact that they understand the implications that anything that's in a priority B could actually apply for a credit fund approval agreement. I think what we'll do then is we will approve the report as it stands, and I'm going to call the vote.
The report as it stands, and what are you doing with these two items?
Sorry, unless you're willing to defer it until after the development charges, which is what I was hearing from Mr. Whitmer, that the development charges by law is not going to be completed until another year from now?
That's true, and when the development charges by law is considered, the developer will be there considering his request, if there is a request, for servicing for this particular property. But staff, sorry, council still has control over his plan of subdivision, because it's going to come back to us along with the zone change. And we'll have ultimate power in terms of making that decision at that point in time, with a clause for not advancing in terms of development up to a certain date. But what this allows is for the consideration and the joint circulation and weeding out all the issues, so they both can work together to come up with some design. Otherwise, we're going to be back here two years, two years from now, trying to try to make this mesh again. And already, one of them is going forward, but it can only go so far, because it needs parcel 34. It's, I mean, I've worked on this, I know what's happening.
Okay. Councilor Yonetski, you put your motion on the floor, and it was seconded, that we move this priority from a C to a B. We have to vote on that first, and then, yeah, so why don't we do that? We'll vote on that request first. Court of vote has been called for, to move that parcel up from a, 34 and 35 parcel be moved up from a priority C to a priority B. Is that, is that clear? Everybody understands? Okay. All right, you can vote now. Right, so we will, why don't we, I was, thank you, just going to ask to move the original motion, thank you, Councilor Galloway-Seelock? Yeah, Zig has, sorry, Councilor Yonetski has to move it, as he had the report.
So we move this first?
Yeah, we'll finish this off first.
Okay. The report of the Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee be adopted, there's just two items, one is the growth management plan, which is, we just dealt with, for 2013 to 2015, as attached, be approved, and the second item, dealing with the zone change amendment for ZC 1309, COK-SRM, being the amendments to the minor changes to the proposed zoning bylaw dated, bylaw dated August 28, 2013.
Okay, all in favor? And that's, oh, thank you, I apologize, thank you, Councilor Vrbanovic, seconded, all in favor, and it was unanimous. Thank you. That's that report. Now we'll go back into our original format, which would be the Community Services Infrastructure Meeting, and that would be Councilor Galloway-Seelock.
Yes, it's been moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Ionitis, that items one through seven be moved, number seven being an item that was referred to today, I believe. Number one being a demolition control application for 1209 Dunville Road with the conditions as outlined. Number two being a traffic bylaw to implement a 30-minute parking time limit on Queen Street from the points that are identified in the report. Number three is on-street parking prohibition on Heinz Avenue, as outlined in the report. Number four is traffic bylaw for no parking with regulation-specific sections of Lorraine Avenue. Number five is a noise bylaw, a noise exemption for deconstruction on the Highway 401 and the bridge improvements from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM for a period of May 1st, 2014, to November 30th, 2014. And number six is the Safe and Healthy Committee, Community Advisory Committee Work Plan be approved. And number seven is the Colb Creek Class Environmental Assessment, which is being referred to today.
Okay, and seconder is Councilor Ionitis, all in favor? And that's approved. And our next, Finance and Corporate Services, Councilor Davie? Sorry, just one second, there we go.
Thank you, thank you, Acting Mayor Fernandez. It's moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Singh, the report of the Finance and Corporate Services Committee be adopted. There is only one item, and that, subject to the 2014 budget deliberations, $27,500 be allocated to the Waterloo Regional Green Solutions Residential Energy Efficiency Project, known as REEP, as part of the environmental committee's 2014 operating budget, as outlined in Finance and Corporate Services Report, FCS 13-150.
And it's seconded by?
Councilor Singh.
Councilor Singh, okay. And all in favor? And that's passed. All right, we now go to any new business? All right, and questions and answers? Want anybody else? Okay, Councilor Van Graham?
Thank you very much. This question pertains to perhaps Ms. Houston, relating to the issue of trees in our community. We have a mandate to increase our coverage of trees. We have a mandate to increase our coverage of trees, but I know that our budget is limited, and I know that we've lost a lot of tree coverage with the emerald ash issue. So my questions relate to the current time of year we find ourselves in, there's some good deals at nurseries. Has the city ever looked into getting some bulk buying or deals with nurseries at this time of year?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor. Currently, what we do is we tender in the spring and the fall, and we've found that those are the best times of year to tender for the material pricing and the quality of materials. You have to also keep in mind that the plant material is only about one-third of the overall cost, and most of it's related to the labor and equipment to actually install the costs. So staff are fairly confident that the pricing mechanisms that we're using currently are quite cost-effective for us.
Thank you. Do we ever grow our own trees, or do we always purchase our trees?
We always purchase our trees. We don't have a tree farming area at our operations facility, and we haven't, to my knowledge, in the history. We find that the nurseries do provide a good selection of materials, and they offer competitive prices, so we're quite satisfied with using the nurseries.
Is this a unionized issue, or could neighbors plant trees as well to save on the cost? If they were overseen perhaps by a city staff person?
We'd have to look at that. We did look at whether people could donate money towards a tree, and we're looking at that in terms of offering a income tax receipt and that kind of thing. We also have to consider the equity in that kind of a proposal, because you'd have the haves and the have-nots. You might have a different standard. So you want to look at all those criteria, but that is something that we're currently investigating.
That's helpful. In terms, I mean, there is, you know, an opportunity here if people want to pay a premium for a larger tree as well. So I understand there's a different standard, but if it enhances their property, just like if they, you know, planted something on their own property, has that been looked at, if they wanted to upgrade to a larger tree or a different kind of tree?
Again, that's something we'd have to look at within the donation rules and that kind of thing.
So, thank you, and I'll leave it at that. I do think it's worth looking at in terms of opportunities for cost-sharing with those communities that have lost a lot of trees, and I think there's an interest there in looking at that. So would you be bringing back some kind of a report in their future, or how would that, would I have to ask about that again?
We can certainly keep council members informed. If a report with a recommendation needs to come back, we will certainly bring one back.
Thank you very much.
Actually, thank you for asking. I'm going to interject a little bit. This is something that I know I have spoken about before, especially with losing close to 600 trees in Ward Four. I know that there's a keen interest for a number of residents to partner with the city, and I think it would be a wonderful opportunity. They would have a sense of ownership for those trees, and I think that, I would like to see us investigate this a lot further. I know that we're going to start losing a lot of trees in Ward Six, and if we have residents who are eager and are wanting to take care of the trees, I think we should really work on partnering with them. So I really would like to see more than just some discussion, I think sincere investigation on how we can do that in the following year, once we've stumped and gotten rid of the stumps of the other trees. So I don't know if that needs any more of a direction, or, I'm looking to council for any comments. Okay, so I think you, I look forward to hearing more from you back, okay? I do have another, I do have one question myself, and I guess this is regarding human resources and our hiring practices. Do we have a policy around hiring senior management? Do we follow that policy, so that council is informed? Mr. Chapman?
I'll have to report back on that, Madam Chair. I know the HR Division went through a comprehensive review of policies a number of years ago, and so I'll have to go back and see what the status of that policy was after that review.
Okay, and I guess I don't mean to belabor the point, but the policy that I dug up was policy 11-130, which apparently was amended February 7 and August 29, regarding the hiring of senior management. And it speaks to that, to provide a process whereby council may elect to discuss the recommendation to hire staff at job grade 13 and above. So in the last three years that I've been here, I've never seen us have a report on hiring position for grade 13 and higher, so I'd be interested to know how we can follow up on that.
So I'll certainly follow up, and we can report back through Finance and Corporate Services Committee.
Okay, that's great, thank you very much. Councilor Ben Graham?
Sorry, I forgot to ask one other question regarding the cycling trails, and where we were with our negotiations with the railway company about the crossing, and the attempt to have room for a 90-degree turn, and the gates open. I'm sorry, I was away, I think, when this was discussed. Can we have a status update on that?
Oops. There we go.
We did recently get approval from the railway to proceed with the changes. My understanding is we're still trying to get that done this fall.
Well, that would be great. I know there's a large interest in it, and I think it would be great to follow through on that. So if you could let us know about that milestone, when that comes forward, would there be a report or some kind of an update to council when that happens?
We can certainly let you know when it has happened. I think we're geared up to make it happen.
Thank you, I think that's great, and I know there's a lot of interest in it.
That'll be good news for the cycling committee, they've been waiting to hear that. Councilor Etherington?
Just one question to staff. Could you update me on the situation of the community garden that is supposed to be going in on the land where the water tower stood? I thought it was moving along, seems to have ground to a halt. Can someone update me on that?
It's through you, Madam Acting Mayor. I confirm that the latest information that staff had was that it was in the region's hands. Perhaps if council wishes, it's an item that we could bring back at a future in-camera meeting.
I would appreciate that, because I thought it was well underway, and now I'm getting questions again, so maybe we could deal with that. Thank you.
On that same note, Mr. May, I know that there have, we get a flurry of requests in the spring for community gardens, and often those groups have been, get put off foreseeably to the fall. And now I'm understanding that some of those groups are now being put off to the spring, which is really our much busier time for staff. Is it, do we review community gardens and the groups that have made those requests, and move forward on them? We've had really good weather for the ability for staff to maybe get them at least rototilled, so that the residents can actually start planting as soon as the thaw is there?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor, I would suggest that that's information that we can look into and report back to council on.
Okay, and that would be great, if we can get that maybe for the next committee meeting, I think that would be really helpful, because if the weather still continues on, it would be great to get some of these areas rototilled, so that we could get moving on that. Thank you very much. All right, we are now, no more questions and answers, thank you. Bylaws for first reading, and we don't need to do D, because that was already done, so I need a mover for the bylaws. Councilor Singh, a seconded, Councilor Zig Yunetski, and all in favor? And that's, oh, sorry, I apologize. Clerk, are there any other bylaws?
Yes, there are four late-starter bylaws. One has to do with a zone change for the 2013 annual zoning bylaw update, and three have to do with part lock controls for Langren Court.
Right, so moved by Councilor Singh, seconded by Councilor Ionitis, all in favor? All right, and we will now resolve ourselves into the committee of hold. Oops. Click again. Thank you.
Okay, I would call for a mover for the second reading of the bylaws. Thank you, Councilor Galloway-Sielak. All in favor?
That's passed, okay.
Those against? Thank you. We've already, I believe, dealt with every agenda item, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
No.
All in favor?
Wait, I see, Councilor Singh, you have your button pushed, okay.
Question for number two.
All right, let's.
No, it's this question for the appointment. I know later part of November, you usually get a big package of appointment settings, so is there a reason why this would not be coming along with the natural course of, you know, the scheduling for appointment setting, rather than separately? It's just that I only saw one application, and I wanted to know how many more people applied, or would be more prudent, if proper staff can answer this, to delay it to the later, I guess, November or December, whenever we do do this, so that we could get more circulation or more interest.
I believe, and I'll ask staff for an answer, but I believe this is because we're short of two people for two areas. And this person volunteered for that.
Mr. Goode has some information on that.
Yes, through Acting Mayor. With respect to the advisory committees, they're set on a two-year cycle, and so this would actually be off-year for the advisory committees, which means they wouldn't come forward in the normal package they'd be seeing in November. And Councilor Etherington is correct that this is to fill an interim vacancy. There's actually currently three vacancies on the committee, and this is a person who applied, who expressed interest in being a member of the committee.
Okay. Councilor Ionitis had a question, just like, click on you, there you go.
Yeah, I have a little bit of a concern with item number two, and I don't know what it is, but it seemed to seem a continuous pattern of reports coming out of Heritage Committee, always at the last minute. And I want to change that. I want to see a schedule on when reports are supposed to be dispersed to council, instead of at these last-minute, when I don't really have a time to even look at this and see who I'm trying to appoint here. I would like to have some more time, so I want to see a schedule.
Just want a quick comment, I don't think this is coming out of Heritage, this is actually coming out of Finance and Corporate Services, and out of the clerk's office, is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Acting Mayor, this is originating from Heritage Kitchener did consider this matter, and did put forward the recommendation. The report was written by staff in Finance Corporate Service's office, through the clerk's office.
So it is a Heritage matter?
Are you talking about, sorry, Councilor Etherington has the floor.
I would like to see a report on how, a schedule on how reports are given to council, considering Heritage, because they're always coming at the last minute.
Go ahead.
Does council want to take a vote on that? Do you want to move any kind of motion, Councilor?
Councilor Davy has clicked in.
Just a question, just before we take a vote or anything like that, I just would like to ask staff if that, I like that certain information requires direction from counseling, staff can report back on that?
Who can answer that? Mr. May?
Through you, Madam Acting Mayor. I think if this is something that council would like us to pursue, it would be helpful to get greater clarity around the issue. This is a function that is supported both out of the clerk's office, and in some respects out of Heritage Planning. And so these items, in terms of vacancies, come up at Heritage Kitchener and are brought forward, but if council is thinking about a larger picture in terms of other issues and applications that come through Heritage Kitchener, then that's direction that we would need, and I would suggest a vote of council would be best.
Okay, Mr. Goode, you indicated you had a comment.
Thank you, through you, Acting Mayor. I know as well, speaking from past experience, that typically the timing with respect to these types of applications, they're processed through to enable the person to then take part in the next subsequent advisory committee meeting.
That's fine for this particular report, but it's, I see a pattern that's continuously, there's, we sometimes don't even get the minutes, and we're trying to make decisions on Heritage issues, and I have a big problem with that.
Mr. May, oh, sorry, Councilor Etherington has the, Mr. May?
Councilor, as I recall, I thought that was corrected, that was in general, general items that were coming to council, and I agree with you, there's need for more background relating to those, but I don't think it related to this, the appointments to Heritage, but maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
Through you, Councilor Etherington, I think, my apologies earlier. Perhaps what I could suggest is that I could go away and speak to Councilor Ionitis offline, and between the city clerk and I, we can look to address the issues he's raising.
That's fine, thank you.
So do we have a mover for, you moved, I'm sorry, those in favor? And against? Councilor Ionitis against. So that is all items. Madam Clerk, is there any other items that I should be looking at?
There are? No others?
I'm sorry. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Now I need to introduce the motion that the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole health estate, as attached here too, informing part of these minutes, are hereby adopted and confirmed, and I believe I need a second. Councilor Singh, second.
And all in favor? And that's carried. All right, bylaws for the third reading, it has been moved by Councilor Verbanovich, seconded by Councilor Ionitis, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as a third, be finally passed and numbered by the clerk. All in favor? And that's passed, and it has been moved by Councilor Gazola, that we adjourn. All in favor? Thank you. Good night.